Mm. I have some juice. Okay. Yeah.
I'm not. And I don't see it. We actually do have stuff like that. I thought you could normally go and have like, they have to go reject you. But then after this morning. I'm like, oh, okay. I don't care. They are all saying, like, oh, so. He's just like. I can't ask just. I mean, I just. I should wear a flag. It's like. I'm like, I. No, it's actually. No, I'm not. Just like. I mean, I'm like, yeah. I'm like, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I'm like, I was like, oh, yeah. I hope they get some reason for it. Or whatever. That way. I'm like, oh, my God. I mean, I'm like, oh, yeah. It's like, amazing. Oh, oh, gee. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know. Most of our ideas come from somewhere. I'm like, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Um. I'm like, oh. 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 Ah. I'm like, oh. 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 What's, what's your best? She's the best friend. That's right. That's right. Oh. Oh, my God. It's Mary. That's what you know. I'm like, oh. I just do. Yeah. I mean, I'm like, oh.
The time is six o'clock, we're gonna go into our regular scheduled meeting. We're gonna go to the, uh, budget.
Good evening, Mr. President, School Board Trustees, BISD family and community. Tonight is our annual public hearing in preparation for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. We will discuss our budget plans for next year as well as the potential tax rate. Again, tonight's presentation is designed to provide information on the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. The budget presents the district's finance and operations plan for the general debt service and child nutrition funds. The development, review, and consideration of these budgets were completed with a review of our revenue and expenditures within the context of our district's vision, mission, goals, and operating procedures. The annual hearing provides transparency and a clear look at how the funds are utilized to meet our district priorities. Board, you have a completed copy of the district's budget, proposed budget. The presentation tonight will be taken from this completed document. Joining me in the Joining me in the presentation tonight is our CFO, Mrs. Cheryl Hernandez. As we begin every presentation and our budget, of course, is built on meeting the vision and mission of our organization. Can you join me in reciting the vision, please? In collaboration with the entire community, we will create an inclusive environment, academic excellence that supports the diverse needs of all learners, and our mission statement. We will inspire and prepare all students for lifelong success by providing an exemplary education in a safe learning environment. The budget process is comprehensive and inclusive. It is a continuous cycle that traditionally begins in the fall, and now we are at the budget adoption process. Our goal throughout the planning phase is to ensure that our district reaches our board outcome goals. We also want to make certain that within our budget process that we present a balanced and sustainable budget for the board to adopt and approve. Again, we continually monitor and evaluate how we utilize the district's resources on a continuous basis. I am excited to present that tonight's budget is a balanced budget. This is just a snapshot of the calendar. We have a timeline that we follow. Again, we're at the end of the cycle tonight with our request for the board to approve the budget that is presented. Other key dates which are not included here include our multiple budget workshops, notices, final adoption deadline, and all of the internal work that our team undergoes throughout the course of a year in preparation for the upcoming budget cycle. We comply with all state required timelines to ensure transparency and compliance. We have shared our twenty-five, twenty-six budget priorities earlier this year, but our priorities remain to continue to provide every student with opportunities to participate in high-quality learning experiences. We want to make certain that our budget assists in recruiting, retaining, and supporting effective teachers and principals, providing a safe, secure, and supportive learning environment, ensuring that post-secondary readiness is achieved for our students, and we want to make certain that our financial resources align with our board goals and priorities. So by law, the superintendent is responsible for preparing the proposed budget, and the board is responsible for adopting the budget. The trustees are also responsible for adopting a tax rate that is sufficient enough to fund the budget, ensure that our finances are audited annually, and ensuring that we promote fiscal transparency. As you can see, we comply with each and every one of these requirements. We, of course, report on our finances every month. We also have our financial check register posted on our website, so if any in our community would like to know how their tax dollars are being spent, they can go to our website, to the business and finance section, and you can see where every dollar is spent. Every month, we share purchases over fifty thousand dollars so that our community and our board can see and approve how we spend our money over fifty thousand dollars reaching our vision and mission of our organization. Of course, TEA requires legal requirements that we must follow. We must make public notice, which we did, and make certain that the budget is accessible. TE also, TEA also plays a role in that they actually calculate our tax rate. Again, we are not approving the tax rate this evening or asking the board to approve a recommended tax rate this evening. That will occur in August, most likely August or September, but we are in compliance with all legal and TEA requirements. As shared during previous budget workshops and in previous presentations, a significant portion of this process is trying to determine what our actual revenue will look like. The state revenue that we receive is directly correlated to the percentage of time our kids are in school, our average daily attendance. This is a chart from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-six that shows the progression of what, what our enrollment looks like, which is the blue column, compared to the gray shaded area, which is our average daily attendance. So as you can see, our enrollment has decreased a little bit over the course of the last several years. We have had a larger decrease in average daily attendance. So as we prepare the budget, we must estimate what is our state revenue actually going to look like, and we make that estimate based on the percentage of time that our students actually come to school. So if you look at twenty twenty-five, for example, which is the year we are concluding enrollment of sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight, we didn't build the budget for this year with the sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty-eight average daily attendance. We based it on a little over fourteen thousand students in average daily attendance. So again, we've talked about the importance of our students, of course, coming to school to ensure that they can learn, but again, just reminding our board and community that our funding, our state funding is contingent upon the percentage of time that our students actually come to school. So at this time, I'll turn over the next few slides to Mrs. Hernandez, who will talk a little bit about, uh, new revenue and the general fund.
At the conclusion of the eighty-ninth legislative session, additional money was infused into the public school system. This slide shows the estimated amount of new revenue that the district is anticipating as we were preparing this next year's budget. They did increase the basic allotment by fifty-five dollars. It wasn't much, it's going, it's estimated to be just over seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, but that again depends on what our ADA is, because if our ADA is less than the number that was used for this number, then the allotment could be smaller. We also are going to receive a, um, an amount for classroom teachers, the retention allotment, and that's based off of the number of teachers that have three and four years of experience. We will receive twenty-five hundred dollars for each of those years of experience. And then if the teacher has five thousand, I mean, five years or more, we receive five thousand dollars for those. And then there were other allotment increases, the support staff allotment, that was based off of ADA as well at a hundred and six dollars per ADA. And then, um, they increased the school safety allotment from ten dollars to twenty dollars per ADA, and then, um, added up to thirty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars per campus. And then they did tweak the early education allotment. We, we are anticipating an additional nine hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred for that. When they did this back in twenty nineteen to pay for pre-K, they implemented an early education allotment, and I believe they've just tweaked that a little bit because they didn't really fund it with your pre-K ADA, because we're funded with half of the pre-K ADA. So if a student goes to school a hundred percent of the time for a pre-K student, we receive funding on fifty percent of that. And if they're counted for half a day, then we get twenty-five percent of that. So this next slide is our general fund budget. We are projecting that our total revenue will be a hundred and eighty-eight million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. These are still estimates. I want to remind the board, we have not received our certified value, so the numbers that we've been using in our template to project what our revenue is going to be, we're basing those off of estimates that we were receiving from the Jefferson Central Appraisal District as well as, um, estimating what we are anticipating our revenue to be. Now, we are anticipating a slight decline in our student enrollment because that has been a trend, and so we're trending down as we have done in the past. And then our payroll costs may seem a little bit large to you as you look at it, going from a hundred and thirty-three million to a hundred and forty-nine million, and that was because we're taking back control of the, uh, Phil Price, Jones Clark, and Smith Middle Schools. So we had to staff those, so these numbers reflect the cost of payroll because they are our employees now rather than the contracted service. And you'll notice the professional services went down from twenty-seven, just almost twenty-eight million dollars, down to fourteen million. That's because we're no longer making contracted payments. So those are two different relationships. So when we're in control and there are employees, the costs go into payroll, and then when we contracted, they went into professional services. We had a slight increase in supplies and materials, and that's probably due to how people allocated funds when they received their budget allocations. More went into supplies, and then the same is for, is, uh, other operating expenses. Debt service remains the same, that's the amount that we pay for that bus lease when we bought the buses several years ago. And then our transfer out is for the amount when we pass the Vader that we're transferring to maintenance to take care of HVAC and roofing issues. Are there any questions? Okay, we'll move on to debt service. So we are estimating the revenue to be twenty-eight million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand. It is increased because we're anticipating that our values are going to increase based off of the estimates that we receive from the appraisal district. And we're, um, the bond payments that are scheduled for this next year are twelve million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in principal and eight mil, eight thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars in interest. And then we also have budgeted seven million, one eighty-five for defeasement of additional debt in our Series twenty sixteen. It depends on what is most, the, most advantageous at that time when we're trying to refund, or defees those, not refund them, but defease them. And if you'll look, we included a slide because a lot of times you want to know, well, how long do we have to pay on these bonds? How long are we going to be levying that tax? And if you'll look at this slide, it's gonna be till two thousand and thirty-eight. That's how long it, we, we, those bonds were issued for thirty years at that time. So the payments that are scheduled, you'll see there are some that are twenty million, some are twenty-one million, some are eighteen million. It's because each time that we defease the debt, they choose which ones will give us the best bang for our buck and save taxpayers the most money. So that's why the Series are not kind of all the same because we have done refundings and we have done defeasements. So we, as of, at this time, we owe a hundred and seventy-three million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's down from the three hundred and eighty-eight million. So we have paid off more than two hundred million dollars since two thousand and eight on those bonds that were issued. The next slide is our child nutrition fund. This fund is self-sustaining. The funds that are received here, we receive federal reimbursements for our breakfast and lunch, and we feed all of our children free through the CEP program. We also have, um, maintenance costs that are budgeted because we have two maintenance employees that work on all of the HVAC equipment and the cafeteria equipment built in here. So it's not just food service, it's also those maintenance, uh, individuals that are assigned here. This fund is going to, um, reflect a deficit budget. We are still under the spend-down requirement from our audit from several years ago to spend the fund balance because we cannot have more than three months operating, um, expenditures on hand. You can't bank the federal government's money, so you're required to spend it. They have since changed it to five months. We can hold five months operating expenditures, but we are still subject to the three months from the period that that audit occurred. So we've got twenty-three and twenty-four, or, or twenty-two and twenty-three that we are required to spend, the four million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand. It takes a while to kind of spend that money, building freezers, putting out bids, redoing cafeteria, uh, lines and all. So, um, we, we do have a spend-down plan that was approved with TDA, and so it just takes some time for us to do this. Any questions on that? So also included in our general fund budget are our one-time funds allocation. So this, this is a listing of how we have allocated. Of course, we've moved our bus lease payment to our one-time funds to get it out of the regular budget and this year, and then the following year, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven, then that will be paid off. We've also allocated for a one-time stipend of up to one thousand dollars for employees. And then we have, um, budgeted for new buses. The buses that we bought several years ago are now out of warranty and require a lot of, uh, repairs, so we want to begin a program to where we're adding to it, the budget each year to replace those over time instead of trying to buy them all at once where they all become old at the same time, so we'll have a constant new, um, set of buses and not having to spend as much on those. We've also allocated to our athletics maintenance projects and then our fine arts program, three hundred thousand to athletics and fine arts, five hundred thousand. And the reason why fine arts is a little bit higher is because it is the year to replace the band uniforms at Westbrook. They have a year rotation on when those occur, and this year will be Westbrook's, uh, band uniforms. And then we have some staff and support initiatives and recruitment and strategic consulting. Any questions about those? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Allen to talk about compensation.
So the largest portion of our budget, or about eighty percent of our budget in our revenue, is dedicated to employee compensation. So I wanted just to take a moment to highlight, just for a teacher, compensation history for the past six years prior to the recommendation that we'll be making tonight for teacher compensation. So we've made consistent efforts, even when we didn't have resources. As you can see, you know, we've been lean for many, many years. Last year, you know, so appreciative of our community for supporting our district in approving that voter approval tax rate election, which allowed us to really infuse additional resources into our, our teachers and our employees. But back in twenty nineteen, twenty, I'm showing a snapshot of a base salary for a teacher who, in twenty nineteen, she was a twenty-three, or on step twenty-three in twenty nineteen. So this particular teacher in twenty nineteen received a seven point four increase, which was about forty-three hundred dollars. We are listing the one-time stipend at that time was five hundred dollars. The district continues to annually contribute five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars toward our employee health insurance, which is actually more than what is required by the state. We contribute four hundred and sixty dollars per month per employee, and the requirement is two-twenty. So we continue to make that, uh, contribution to our employees' health insurance. So when you look at the total compensation for salary and benefits for this particular twenty-three, uh, teacher on step twenty-three in twenty nineteen, twenty, with sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty total compensation package. So with an increase from the prior year of seven point four percent. So as you progress through the additional years, in twenty twenty-one, we weren't able to give much. We gave a one percent increase. In twenty-two, we gave a one point three percent increase. So the teacher moved up to fifty-eight, eight, a total compensation of sixty-five thousand. Twenty-two, twenty-three, a two percent increase, which brought this particular teacher to sixty-five thousand. Twenty-three, twenty-four, which we gave a one, a little over one and a half percent, sixty-seven thousand. And last year, this current year that we're ending, a five point four percent for this teacher for a total compensation package of seventy thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. So this year, what we are proposing for the twenty-five, twenty-six recommendation, of course, we received a three point six million for the teacher retention allotment, as Mrs. Hernandez already stated. So because we are a school system with more than five thousand students, our teachers, who have been in the classroom with at least three years and less than five, so between three and five, will receive the minimum twenty-five hundred dollar increase. Our teachers with more than five years of experience will receive five thousand dollars. And this includes our adjunct teachers who meet these two criteria of having been in the district teaching at least two to three years or five or more years. And it must be a part of the teacher's salary schedule. We was required to, we were required to develop a new teacher salary schedule. You know, I had a meeting, uh, at the end of the school year discussing with the teacher advisory council and really asked them how they would like to see, you know, if we had flexibility with how to, how to distribute the funds to the teachers. And they wanted a one-time, but the state required that we actually And they wanted a one-time, but the state required that we actually infuse it into the teacher's salary schedule, which we'll show you in a moment. When we looked at new revenue, we received three-point-six for the teacher retention allotment. And then for the support staff allotment, we received a little over five hundred thousand, I think five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And this is the amount of resources that were given to school districts to support all other employees. So the five thousand and twenty-five hundred can only go to individuals who meet that criterion, who are teaching children. So eligible staff, school counselors, librarians, school nurses, uh, teachers aides, our custodial food service, transportation, all other employees. The only resources that were provided by the state was the five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So what we are recommending for this year is we developed a new pay scale for classroom teachers. Now, this was recommended, of course, as I stated previously. We also developed a new pay scale for professional staff who are not included in the raise from the state. The state recommended, TEA recommended that we develop a new scale for professional staff because previously we had certain positions. We had our nurses, our counselors and our librarians were included on the teacher's step scale. So with this infusion of resources that the state says absolutely will not go to any employees other than classroom teachers, we were required to develop a new pay scale for professionals who were previously on the teacher's scale, but now they're on a different scale. We increased the starting teacher's salary to fifty-five thousand, five hundred. And that is up from our previous starting year salary was fifty-three, five hundred. So we increased the starting teacher's salary, two thousand dollars. All eligible employees, all other employees will receive a por- a four percent increase from their midpoint. So we are excited and happy to be able to recommend a four percent raise to all employees at this time. And we want to continue to recommend a one-time stipend of up to one thousand dollars included for all eligible employees in this budget, as well as a continuation of the four hundred and sixty dollars per month for each employee for health insurance. So when you look at what we were able to do, we were working diligently on our budget prior to this legislation being passed, which provided additional resources for school districts to provide to teachers. So we have been working, not anticipating or expecting or knowing what we would receive from the state. So we worked and I've shared this publicly with the expectation that, hey, we may not receive any new revenue, so we're still going to work to give our employees an increase whether or not we receive additional money from the state. So we were able to, we closed, I think, two million dollars, Mr. Samuels, a little over two million dollars worth of, uh, positions that were, you know, no longer leaning on vacant positions. That's a part of our annual process and, you know, really streamlined additional costs. So we were able to make this recommendation tonight. And what I want to highlight tonight is that Beaumont ISD is asking, I'm asking our board to approve for our three to four-year teachers, the state is giving us twenty-five hundred, but we're asking the board to give an additional five hundred for a total of three thousand. For our teachers, five to nineteen years, the state is giving us five thousand. I'm asking the board to give an additional five hundred for teachers in that bracket for fifty-five hundred. And then for all of our teachers who are twenty or more years, I'm asking our board to approve an additional thousand dollars compensation for a total of six thousand dollars. And then for our one to two-year teachers, there was no mandate to increase at all, but we're asking the board to approve a twenty-seven, seven-fifty increase for those teachers. So we worked really hard and were able to provide a compensation package for all of our employees with a four percent increase, but also increase our teachers so that we can show, you know, we should, we, we value and appreciate the work that our teachers do. You know, they are the front line, they are, they are in the thick of working daily with our students and especially our teachers who have been in the district, who have shown tremendous, uh, commitment to our students. We wanted to, because we had the resources to do it, to, uh, actually increase a little bit more than what was expected or required from the state. So I don't know if you can read this, but Ms. Hernandez, can you, can you discuss, this is the teacher salary scale for classroom teachers and the instructional?
Professional support.
Professional support. This is the new, uh, plan.
Yes. So the one on the left is the new hiring guide for our classroom teachers, as Dr. Allen stated. The, um, zero-year experience will start at fifty-five thousand, five hundred. These are for certified teachers. Now, um, we, we increased from the previous year. You'll see there, there's different increases because it depends on where they were and some of the steps requ- they receive the same thing, but depending on what you were, the increase percentage is a little bit different because it's a formula. And it goes all the way up to thirty-one years and their, that, their salary will be seventy-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy if you have thirty-one years of experience. If you're twenty years, you're going to be making sixty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Now, the, the right side is the new hire guide for instructional professional support. This will be anyone who was on, paid off of the teacher pay scale last year, but you're not a classroom teacher, so the district does not receive the five thousand dollars or the twenty-five hundred. So this one received a four percent from the midpoint increase and it's still, the starting pay would be fifty-five-five. And then to, to compare, the twenty-year, sixty-seven, one-seventy, the twenty-year for the, um, instructional professional support, which would be a librarian, a nurse, uh, instructional coaches, um, our trainers are paid off of this scale. And then, uh, their twenty-year is at sixty-three, nine-twenty because we did not receive the funding for those.
So any questions about the compensation that we are recommending tonight? And I certainly want to thank our board for, first of all, supporting our efforts last year to give our employees a five percent increase. And then I'm, I'm really excited that we're offering a four percent increase. We're talking about nine percent increase in compensation to help make us more competitive and to help reward our employees who work so hard. So I'm really excited about that and hope the board approves it tonight.
Yes, sir.
I think, Dr. Allen, you probably said what I was going to say, our district would be more competitive.
Yes, sir.
Because, uh, they will, our librarians and all will come to our district. We, that's what the board wants, so.
Absolutely. And, you know, one of the things I mentioned, you know, we've never, the board has never approved, we've never brought a deficit budget. So when you think about the revenue that was given to school districts and the increase in the basic allotment of the fifty-five dollars, that was nothing. You know, we were truly asking for a significant increase in the basic allotment. So the fact that we've never given a, or provided or had approved a deficit budget or brought a deficit budget, that actually places us in a different position from districts who actually have deficit budgets. So we're not, we weren't depending on that increase in the basic allotment in order to make this recommendation for the four percent increase because districts with deficit budgets actually had to utilize any increase to try to fill that hole or that negative hole. So we're, we're not in that position, uh, thanks to the leadership of our board. So I'm, I'm excited that we can still recommend, uh, you know, a, a, a nice raise to all of our employees.
Okay, um, one of the discussions that we have to talk about is our property values and, um, that is a huge part of how much money the district is going to receive from the state because you have to use the, the template to determine. And one of the reasons why property values, they, they got changed back in twenty nineteen, we, we went to current property values to figure how much money that we were going to receive for that year. But, you know, two years ago or three years ago, we got hit because we didn't get local values from the state. And so we went all the way up to the top and sued the state and we still didn't get our local values and we were still short six million dollars. So whenever we're projecting this, we are still hoping that we're going to receive our local values when our values are submitted by our appraisal district, that we have no control over what they say those values are. And then they submit it to the state and the state determines, we have no control over what the state says that those values should be and that's how we're funded. And so this slide just shows you the historical twenty-twenty-four where we were, twelve million, nine-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, four-seventy-nine, twelve billion, did I say million? Twelve billion, nine-hundred-and-thirty-two million, four-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-six dollars. Then last year, our values went up to thirteen million. We're showing just a slight increase because they sent this to us as our certified estimate in April, but it is still, uh, climbing. It's up to fifteen million sometimes at those times. They don't include everything. So that, the, the amount of money still that we receive, um, will be based off of the number of kids that we have and the ADA. So these numbers will change. Most likely we'll do an amendment in July to adjust our revenue. We anticipate our, um, appraised values from the appraisal district towards the end of July. It, we may receive them prior to the July board meeting. If not, we'll make adjustments in August. Okay? Then also, this is a slide just that shows you that property values have increased over the years and we are, we don't, we don't have twenty-five, twenty-six because we didn't know really what it's going to be, but we are anticipating an increase. And then this was the slide that we used in our Vader presentations and we really like it because it just shows you plainly that the board will be adopting two tax rates. We have two tax rates, the M and O tax rate and the INS tax rate. And those two buckets get added together to send out those property tax bills because taxpayers only see one tax rate when you get your bill in the mail. So we anticipate a decrease in the M and O rate. We will most likely hold the INS rate the same to be able to defease additional debt. We defeased in April the, uh, eight million dollars and we saved taxpayers over, I believe it was five or six million dollars. So that's future, we have, we have saved, if you look at over the refundings and over the, the, um, defeasements that we've done, we have saved taxpayers millions and millions of money because we're not having to levy that tax for the future. And then, um, the next slide is showing our tax rate, our historical tax rate. And you can see that it has gone down because the state is doing compression on the tax rate because they, they get a lot of flack because we're the largest tax entity because our tax rate is the highest. And we do anticipate that that forty thousand dollars of additional exemption will pass because that's going to have to go to the voters as well as the additional fifty thousand dollars that they're giving to over sixty-five, um, individuals and disabilities. So those numbers most likely that you'll see that for the twenty-five, twenty-six, our tax rate will decrease. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Ms. Hernandez, and this, first I want to focus our attention, I guess, back to priority. I guess we can call it number three. And, and Lord knows this is not to put you on the spot, it's just, since we talked last, I've just kind of been doing some research. And I have a series of questions and I'll tell you why I'm asking these questions, primarily because of the, the, the work I do outside of being a school board trustee. Um, I'm concerned about our youth and I'm concerned about safety, um, because of the nature of the offenses that our young people continue to commit and the egregious nature of them. And my concern is that that could possibly spill over into some of our campuses. And Lord knows I'm not praying for that, I'm praying against that, but when we look at the increase in the safety allotment and I look at like SB two-sixty, which talks about extra money and then we talk about the, the old bill that had the money, I think, set aside for school marshals, but it didn't really give us money to really make that happen. And I don't think, well, I'll, I'll stop on that, but, you know, is there a strategic plan to, to fortify our campuses and make sure that we're preventative in, in our approach and that we remain vigilant to make sure that the gun violence, to, to be frank, doesn't spill over onto our campuses because it's, it's a sad reality, but we're faced with a different set of circumstances right now with our, with our youth. So are we doing everything that we can and is there a plan in place to reallocate or allocate more funding to fortify campuses, train especially those individuals who aren't really police officers or peace officers, but they may carry a weapon? And a part of me also feels this way because I'm closer to someone in law enforcement now, but, you know, are we doing what we need to do? And I'm sure we are, but just, you know, can you speak to that?
So we, we have increased our, our safety budget considerably over the last three years. We increased compensation because we had a hard time competing with the cities and, I mean, Chief can probably speak to this better than me, of, of hiring officers and, and he's fully staffed. And with the passage of this budget, we did allocate the, the safety and security allotment money to the safety and security because we are che- we are, um, repurposing public safety offers in, public safety officers into armed security guards. So every elementary campus will have an armed security guard. And we've added, um, e- even with the closure of the King and the Lucas, those, uh, officers were allocated to where we didn't have them, at Brown and at, um, Career Center. So every campus will have, uh, someone who is, so will be compliant with the law of having the armed security personnel at every campus. And, and we also have applied for s- the safety and security cycle one grants and, and Chief was able to purchase some things with that. He was also able to purchase some with the cycle two and he added additional person to help with his program. And, um, Chief, it, am I forgetting anything because?
No, ma'am. You're, you're, you're pretty much covering, uh, everything that we were required to do, uh, regarding the HB three expansion. Um, and so we're pretty much there with the second phase that we've just completed this past, uh, this past year in terms of onboarding the additional Level Three security personnel, uh, that are certified from the state. So, uh, you're, you're, you're there.
Okay, okay.
Yes, my next question may be for Dr. Allen and of course, something for the board to may, maybe consider. So I know that other law enforcement agencies like BPD and, and it could be a funding thing that we, we just may not be there yet, but they sponsor officers and they kind of pay them based on the fact that if we pay for your training, then you'll come back and give us a year or two of service. Or is that something that we do or can we consider doing it or maybe take a closer look?
So we've done that actually. Chief can speak to, uh, we've sponsored, I don't know the exact number, but Chief can speak to it. We've sponsored, uh, public safety officers. We actually have one who's been hired, you know, within the department, but Chief can speak more to it.
Y- yes, uh, that is correct, Dr. Allen. Uh, we have, uh, sponsored, uh, roughly two of our employees that have gone through the police academy and that's pretty much what, uh, the area is now doing, whether it's, uh, Beaumont PD, Port Arthur PD, uh, Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, uh, who no longer has their, uh, police, uh, academy. So everybody's now shifting to the local, uh, Lamar Police Academy. However, with every district or every agency is doing now, of course, they are sponsoring their representatives. Uh, and as we already know, that Beaumont PD have onboarded roughly, uh, nine to ten officers, Port Arthur PD had like around six or seven, uh, Jefferson County also. So at present, we're looking, as we continue to move forward with the HB three expansion, to hopefully be able to sponsor some of our own, uh, to be able to attend the next or if not the next, uh, future academy, uh, so we can continue to enhance what we presently have.
Anyone else have a question? I have a statement, you know, while you were talking, I looked up the word defeasement. Y'all understand what she's doing with our money? She's saving us tax dollars every time she makes a payment towards the balance on our account. And over, since I've been on the board, she has saved us millions of dollars, of your taxpayer dollars. And for that, I'll say thank you.
So tonight during the action items, the board will be asked to approve the general fund, the debt service fund and the child nutrition fund.
I appreciate you and like, Dr. Allen, coming in on a new board and, on a new person on the board and having a balanced budget. Thank you. That's a, that's a big undertaking. That's very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. We'll, we'll now go into our, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I had not seen the completed, um, budget until now and this is the thing that I complain about every year.
about every year. If my memory is correct, last year, our instructional budget was 51% of our budget. This year, it's 49.7. Why are we going down in instruction when it's the single purpose of our existence?
So last year, when we were making those payments for contracted services to third future schools, we contracted in function 11, instruction. And so when we're staffing a campus, TEA requires us to, if it's a principal, we're going to charge to function 23. If it's a librarian, they're going to function 12, so we break out all the functions. But when we were contracting, we just contracted for instruction. So that's why there's a decrease. We have other things in our budget that other districts don't have, like our one-time money. You add $7 million into your expenditures and those are not typically in instruction because we're using them for maintenance projects, athletics, fine arts, and those are typically 36 functions. So sometimes our numbers are skewed because we have all this extra that other districts don't have.
I find it hard to believe that other districts don't have those same kind of expenses. We have a school district that is not doing well and we present a budget where less than half of our money is going to instruction. I don't care how you, you do it. I've done funds too. I'm not happy when we fall below 50%. I'm not happy when it's at 50%, but I'm certainly not happy when it falls below 50%.
I also want us to, in response to what Ms. Segi is sharing, I think we need to look at to just really verify how we code expenses. And I think that may be some of the difference that we see when you look at the percentage that we spend on instruction. I think that's something that we need to take, that we need to take a look at and we'll look at it closer.
We will.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Would you please stand? Right now, we're going into our regular board meeting. We're going to recite the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag as well to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag.
Honoring Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to Ms. Simeon at this time for some recognition.
Good evening, President Segi, Board Trustees, Dr. Allen, and audience members. The Beaumont Independent School District is proud to recognize and express our heartfelt appreciation to the Honorable Judge Naomi Showers Doyle, Justice of the Peace for Precinct One, Place One. Judge Doyle has been a steadfast partner in education and civic engagement, generously dedicating her time, expertise, and mentorship to the students of BISD through the Judicial Academy Internship and Mentorship Program. Her commitment to educating and empowering our youth has provided students with invaluable firsthand experiences in the justice system, equipping them with knowledge, confidence, and a deeper understanding of the role they can play in shaping a just and equitable society. Through her guidance, our students are not only learning about the law, they are being inspired to lead with integrity, pursue careers in public service, and become informed, engaged citizens. Judge Doyle, thank you for your unwavering support and for being a beacon of leadership and opportunity for the future leaders of Beaumont ISD. Please join me in recognizing the Honorable Judge Naomi Showers Doyle.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the fine board and our superintendent. Thank you all for the opportunity to partner with you and to help our students pursue any type of future plans outside of high school. I'm just glad to have been a product of BISD and be able to give back in this way. So thank you all for the recognition.
the federal courts. Its mission is to bring high school, college, and law school students into real federal courthouses to participate in legal proceedings rooted in real-world situations that young people may face. But this isn't a mock trial. In these courtroom experiences, students take on meaningful roles, serving as attorney advocates who present arguments and as jurors who listen, deliberate, and reach decisions. In some sessions, judges even invite students to sit alongside them on the bench and question the student attorneys directly. Each case centers on a fictional but very relatable scenario built around an actual Supreme Court decision. This spring, our students explored timely and relevant First Amendment issues, including freedom of speech on social media and the right to protest. Through this program, students gain a deeper understanding of the law, the role of the courts, and most importantly, the power of civil discourse in a democratic society. Through our partnership this past year with lawyers from the Michelle F. Mahaffey, Enns of the Courts, and the U.S. Federal Court, more than 150 high school juniors and seniors from our three high schools were able to participate in this valuable program in the fall and spring semesters. Thank you to the following judges and attorneys for giving their time and talent to our students. Judge Christine Stetson, United States Magistrate, Eastern District; Judge Marcia Krone, United States District Judge, Eastern District; Tina Bradley, Patricia Shamblyn, Tanner Franklin, Thad Hartfield, Mary Ann Lane, Nadine Ona, Michelle Smith, and Courtland Spotts. Speaking on behalf of the group tonight is Attorney Mark Sparks.
Dr. Allen, members of the board, grateful to be here again. As you know, we started this program, I think, last year. I want to also recognize, I don't know why I'm not on the list up there, but I should be on the list. I want to also recognize, it's about the kids though, right? It's about the kid. I want to recognize Courtland Spotts and Mary Ann Lane who are here to accept the recognition with me. And I also would like to say that without the organic support of this board and frankly, Ms. LaMasters and Ms. Angelo here supporting us, that this would not have gotten off the ground. We've now done four sessions with about 150 students. I've really enjoyed it. We started this, we were at an in-of-court meeting. In-of-court is like a local thing for lawyers to go at night to learn a little bit more about being a better lawyer. And a group of us, and particularly me, I'm a little tired of seeing some of the so-called leaders that we have with all caps and inappropriate texts and comments, and we wanted to make sure that there would be civil discourse amongst the students. And it's been very rewarding to watch them engage each other with dignity and respect and to participate freely and voluntarily and I think happily in the program. And we've gotten some really good feedback, at least that's, that's what I'm getting. Maybe they're not telling me all the bad feedback. But we are so grateful to have this opportunity, Dr. Allen and members of the board, with the BISD students. I live just down the street, I was born and raised in Beaumont. I'm grateful to be a part of this. So on behalf of the judges, the federal judges, Judge Stetson and Judge Krone, as well as the attorneys of the in-of-court, we are grateful for this recognition. Thank you.
Dividend Divas and Junior Achievement of the Golden Triangle Beaumont for their excellence and inspiring representation of Beaumont United High School at the future bound by Junior Achievement Stock Market Challenge. Competing against student teams from across the region, the Dividend Divas showcased not only financial acumen, teamwork, and strategic thinking, but also the poise, determination, and leadership that define the very best of BISD. Their remarkable performance reflects the power of academic engagement and real-world learning opportunities. We also extend our sincere gratitude to Junior Achievement of the Golden Triangle Beaumont for their continued commitment to preparing young people for success. Through programs like the Stock Market Challenge, they are equipping our students with critical financial literacy skills, entrepreneurial mindsets, and the confidence to navigate the world of business and beyond. To the Dividend Divas, thank you for making us proud. And to Junior Achievement, thank you for investing in the futures of BISD students. Please join us in celebrating this exceptional partnership. And speaking on behalf of Junior Achievement tonight is Jennifer Womack.
I don't know how you follow that voice, but I'll try. Thank y'all so much for having us here tonight and for trusting us with not only our fabulous Dividend Divas, but all of the students that you entrust with our services every year. And if you're not familiar with what Junior Achievement does, we are one of the longest existing nonprofits, not just in the country, but in the world. And we focus on financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and workforce readiness. And we try to keep that at minimal cost to schools as we can. Almost every single thing that we do is free, with the exception of one program that has grants available. Because let's face it, you're approving a budget tonight. You know, if we can help offset that, that's our goal because the students deserve it. So overall, just in this past school year, not just with this program, but all of the ones we offer, we were able to service over 3,700 of your students. So thank you so much for doing that for us. And these girls, I wish they could be here. Oh my gosh, they're phenomenal. They were so determined and passionate and mature and their teacher, Mrs. Carr, is like top-notch. If I ever have an idea, I'm like, okay, let me see who can participate. Miss Carr, what's a good date for you? And I check with Ms. Angelo and she backs it up. And we are always committed to everything that we offer and we're so grateful for that. And in breaking news, and I will leave it at this, not only were they 13th in the nation in the Stock Market Challenge, we found out today that they were second in the state of Texas. So I'm so proud of them and thank you for, for being able to bring them to Atlanta to go to Georgia State University to participate in this and we hope to do it again.
And all of our Dividend Divas are hard at work tonight, so that's why they couldn't be with us, but we will be sure to have them at a future board meeting really soon. Beaumont ISD is honored to recognize Kayla Renee Spell, an exceptional educator at Roy Guest Elementary School, for her inspiring journey to full teacher certification through BISD's Responsive Academy to Certified Educators Brace Program, formerly known as Grow Our Own. Ms. Spell's path is a powerful testament to the district's commitment to cultivating talent from within and investing in individuals who are deeply connected to our students and community. Through the Brace Program, Ms. Spell has demonstrated resilience, dedication, and an unwavering belief in the power of education, not only for her students, but in her own professional growth. Today, as a certified teacher, she stands as a shining example of what is possible when opportunity meets determination. Her success reflects the very heart of what BISD strives for, developing passionate educators who are prepared and empowered to make a lasting difference. Ms. Spell, we celebrate your accomplishment, your commitment, and your bright future as a leader in the classroom. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Kayla Renee Spell on this important milestone and in thanking her for her continued service to our students and schools.
Good evening. Thank you, BISD board. Thank you, Dr. Allen. Thank you, President Segi. I went to say this was not easy, but I am very, very proud of myself. I want to thank my principal, Dr. Easley, and I would like for her to come up and accept this recognition with me. She has prayed with me, she prayed over me. It was very difficult. And I also want to thank Ms. Arianne Moore, I know she's in attendance. And last but not least, I would like to thank Ms. Denise Spooner. She was a very great part of my classroom community. She was our class, she was our class grandma, Mimi. Thank you for everything.
created to honor members of the media who go above and beyond in their coverage of public education. This award marks the reintroduction of what was once known as the School Bell Award, a tradition in BISD's history that celebrated excellence in education journalism. Now revived as the A+ Angle Award, it continues that legacy by shining a light on those who consistently portray our students, staff, and schools with integrity, fairness, and care. Our inaugural recipient is someone who exemplifies the true spirit of community journalism. With a sharp eye for impactful storytelling and a compassionate lens that centers the people behind the headlines, this journalist has become a trusted presence across our campuses and events. Through consistent and positive coverage, this individual helps amplify the voices of our district, often capturing moments of joy, resilience, and achievement that might otherwise go unseen. It is our great honor to present and surprise the first-ever A+ Angle Award to Kim Brent of the Beaumont Enterprise. Please join us in celebrating Ms. Brent for her unwavering support of public education and her powerful storytelling. It was so funny watching her all night scrambling to get a story. She thought she was here to get a story. I told her boss to just make up something to make sure she was here and she was told there were going to be protesters outside and stuff. So it was really funny watching her wait for that to happen.
Congratulations.
Well, I'm, I was literally...
Well, I was literally like, tell me I'm not getting punked right now. And I am. I thought I saw Bianca back there, and I was like, why is Bianca here and I'm here? So, you were trying to hide from me, but I saw you. Well, I'm just so incredibly honored. I like, I don't even know what to say, but thank you so much.
You're in front of the lens now, Kim, looking right here. Thank you, congratulations.
Oh, this has been such a fun night. Finally tonight, Beaumont ISD proudly shines a spotlight on an extraordinary leader whose vision, resilience, and relentless commitment to student success continue to move our district forward. In recognition of her transformative guidance and dedication to equity and innovation, Dr. Shannon Allen has been named the Texas Association of School Boards 2025 Region Five Superintendent of the Year. This prestigious honor celebrates Dr. Allen's ability to lead with strength and compassion, especially during some of the most challenging times in education. From navigating the unprecedented impact of the COVID-19 pandemic to addressing persistent staffing challenges, Dr. Allen has remained focused on what matters most: our students. Her strategic initiatives, including the Brace Program, equip and elevate pathways, and the district-wide placement of behavior interventionalists and wellness coordinators, are redefining how we support the whole child, both academically and emotionally. Under her command, Beaumont ISD is not just adapting, we are evolving. We are becoming a stronger, more student-centered district that continues to draw recognition from across the region. In fact, this marks the second major regional honor for BISD this year, with the recent announcement that Paul Goble was named the 2025-26 Region Five Assistant Principal of the Year. Please join us in congratulating and celebrating Dr. Shannon Allen, our Region Five Superintendent of the Year, and a true champion for every student, every day, in BISD.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Before we conclude recognitions, I certainly want to express my sincere appreciation to our school board. You know, you can't receive a recognition like Superintendent of the Year without a phenomenal group of bosses to really lead, guide, and support the work that we do. So, I want to tell you, thank you so much for your support and your leadership, and also, you know, to my team, the entire Beaumont ISD team, to my executive leadership team, to all of our leaders on our campuses. You all are the ones who are executing the vision, you are the ones who are actually going in and doing the work, and I truly appreciate everything that you all do for our kids, so thank you.
We remind parents to complete online registration for their children by visiting bmtisd.com/registration to ensure a smooth and stress-free first day of school for everyone. And our summer, Monday through Friday, office hours continue, or I should say, Monday through Thursday, office hours continue, through Friday, July 11th, with offices and campuses closed on Fridays until then, until July 11th. And please hold the applause, we will be closed this Friday, June 27th, through Friday, July 4th. Get information on this and other events in BMTISD by visiting our social media platforms, our website, subscribing to our YouTube channel, and exploring our website, bmtisd.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simeon. We will now hear the superintendent cabinet report.
Good evening again, Mr. President, to our Beaumont ISD community. We always begin with our vision and mission statement, but since we've already shared those during the budget hearing, this, tonight's presentation focuses on two of our six core beliefs: All children can and will learn, and all school and work environments will be safe, secure, and supportive. Tonight's presentation will focus on HB6 updates, as well as all things new for BISD for the 25-26 school year. If you recall, last, I think, October, I did a superintendent's report and shared that Beaumont ISD, along with twenty-nine other districts, formed what is called the Student Behavior Management Coalition. And the purpose of the coalition was to ensure that ahead of the eighty-ninth legislative session, we joined together to really and truly discuss legislation that directly impacts student behavior in our classrooms. We were very intentional where we methodically reviewed current policy and what revisions need to be made ahead of the legislative session, so that we could actually get laws changed that impact student safety, teacher safety, as well as, you know, make our classrooms more safe. So, I'd like to report some of the findings in the form of HB6, which passed during this last legislative session. So, one of the things, and I'm just going to highlight, you know, the key points from some of the legislation that changed as a result of the work of the coalition. And one of the things that changed was in-school suspension limitations. So, previously, in-school suspension was limited due to an issue or technicality in interpretation. So, you can only suspend a student for three days. So, based on the work of HB6 that was clarified, so that there is no longer a time limit on the use of in-school suspensions. However, every ten days, there must be a review, so that students, the principal or the leadership on that campus must review that student's placement every ten days after the day of the suspension, to evaluate the progress of the student and to determine if that continued in-school suspension is warranted. So, it also assures that students continue to receive behavior and educational support. So, one of the things that was changed was no limit on in-school suspension days. A second issue that was changed was repeated classroom disruption. So, when you look at feedback from teachers, student misconduct is one of the most cited reasons that teachers are actually leaving the profession. You know, students engage in significant misbehavior for prolonged periods of time, which makes it difficult for teachers to actually execute the work. So, one of the things that HB6 did was it allowed suspension for students of any age. As you know, previously, you could not suspend students of certain grade levels. You couldn't suspend pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, second grade students. Or HB6 allows for suspension of students in any grade level who routinely engage in repeated or significant disruption in the classroom, or who threaten the immediate health and safety of other students. However, an administrator must, at their discretion, reassign a student into out-of-school suspension to in-school suspension if the parent can show and justify that they do not have care for that student, or that they cannot supervise that student if the out-of-school suspension was assigned. So, this law changed, so students can be suspended out of school in any grade level for repeated misconduct. So, serious misconduct anywhere. So, now, previously in the Chapter Thirty-seven, the current mandates included expulsion for serious offenses: unlawful carrying of weapons, aggravated assaults, sexual assault, arson, murder, indecency, aggravated kidnapping, and other things. You would be mandated for expulsion. However, despite the severity of the offenses, to be a mandatory expulsion, the offense must have occurred on school property while attending a school-sponsored or school-related event. So, now HB6 allows for mandatory expulsion for all of these serious offenses, whether or not they occur on school grounds, whether or not it's at a school-sponsored event or a related, school-related activity. So, if things are happening, if students are committing crimes outside of school, now it's a mandatory expulsion. So, HB6 also allowed for the virtual assignment of a JJAEP as an alternative if JJAEP, which is Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program, is unavailable. So, you must meet the DAEP standards where practical, it requires technology access, and professional development for teachers. So, this is especially for smaller communities that don't have access to a JJAEP, or in the event that the JJAEP does not accept a student. So, that is also, it is now an option, but the placement must be reviewed every forty-five days. So, e-cigarette discipline, DAEP is no longer mandatory. During the previous legislative session, any student with an e-cigarette was mandated to alternative school to DAEP. So, that has been removed. It allows for permissive placement of students at the district's discretion. So, the first offense requires a minimum of ten days in ISS, so no longer required to go to DAEP, but a ten-day minimum stay in ISS. Sale or delivery is still mandated as a DAEP assignment. So, District of Innovation exemption removed. All districts must now comply with Chapter Thirty-seven. When you go back to the previous e-cigarette legislative change, we were able to previously, as a District of Innovation, exempt ourselves from, because that's what District of Innovation were allowed to do, exempt ourselves from certain parts of the law. So, we exempted, so we were already doing this, so now you are no longer, you no longer have the option to utilize District of Innovation as an exemption to, that exemption is removed. So, parental involvement in discipline. HB6 adds that a school district may develop a policy that would allow parents of students placed in DAEP to develop, in conjunction with the district, a behavior agreement that outlines parents' responsibilities in conjunction with student behavior at school. If the parents comply with the terms of the agreement, then the district may reduce disciplinary assignments for that student. And discipline for students with disabilities, no longer will it be required for an R to be conducted for even a student with disabilities if they engage in bullying, harassment, hit list, or unless it's a change of placement. The teacher authority to remove students from class has broadened the authority for removal. Students cannot return without consent or a plan. So, the student may not return without the teacher's consent or until a return-to-class plan has been prepared for that student. The principal may only designate an employee of the school whose primary duties do not include classroom instruction to create a return-to-class plan. And TEA penalties prohibit it. TEA cannot penalize districts for Chapter Thirty-seven noncompliance. So, this is, these are several of the things that were actually changed as a result of the work that we did with the Student Behavior Coalition. Any questions on this portion? Yes, sir?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'm so glad Judge Doyle is still here to hear this part of your presentation, because she's been on the front line so much when it comes to helping us try to combat some of our behavioral issues and noncompliance with parents. So, my question is on the expulsion for offenses committed outside of school grounds or not on campus or not in that activity. Can you, if appropriate, of course, can you walk us through what that process looks like? I know that legally, the police department has to notify you when students are arrested. Is that on all?
Yes, when they create, when they exhibit certain type of behavior, there's a code for it, and Mr. Maxwell or Dr. Valdez can tell me what the code, our chief can tell me what the code is, but we are alerted. So, now, you know, we just would receive that notification, and it was discretionary on whether or not you could send that student to DAEP. Well, now, it is mandatory. So, that makes a significant difference. So, once we're alerted, I think, Mr. Maxwell or chief, can you give us the process a little bit on the alerts? Or Mr. Maxwell, to explain the process?
Either one, chief and I both know it. What happens is it may be the county that alerts us if there is an offense. It may be a neighboring county, it could be the Beaumont Police Department, but the agency alerts the school district via letter that X student has committed an offense, names the student, names what the offense is, and then that is called a 1527, and then we act according to that.
So, once we receive a 1527, now, of course, we have additional leverage that we can actually execute and implement now, instead of just it being, oh, we know this happened, now we can actually implement removing that student from that learning environment.
Does juvenile probation play a role in that at all? Is there any reporting or anything that they need to do on their end to make sure that we are identifying those students and then, of course, moving them to a JJAEP? And the reason why I ask is not so much for a punitive reason, because sometimes the wraparound services that can be provided at the JJAEP may be better for the student, but I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page and that the communication lines are clear. So, if it's something that juvenile probation needs to do, I'm more than happy to work with them to make sure that we're all on the same page and hitting on the same cylinder so that things don't fall through the cracks, because I know in the past they kind of have a little bit.
So, this is, this is very new, Mr. Evans, so all of the guidelines and regulations on how to execute and implement have not come out. I wanted you all to see a preview of what is going to come out, so we'll receive more guidance on how to actually implement and execute, but the local things, we have control over the local communication and the local pieces. So, where the gaps exist, we probably need to all sit down as this comes out and we start implementing, because it probably doesn't begin until September. I don't even know when this actually begins. I'm assuming it's September one, but between now and then, making certain that all the parties are seated together and actually discussing to make certain that this doesn't fall through the cracks. Yes, sir?
And Dr. Allen?
Yes, Ms. Higman?
Dr. Allen, is there a way to speed up the process from the time we get that notification to the time we actually have a child reassigned? Now, we've had, we do letters, and then we have, they have to accept the letter, and then you have to have a conference, and it takes, it can sometimes take two weeks.
It can take time. It depends on if they change any of the expectations and regulations for how you actually place a student in JJAEP. I would imagine that they're not going to change that. I mean, I would imagine that. But if they change the regulations or the guidelines or the laws regarding how to place them, then absolutely we could speed it up. But you still have to follow those protocols, you know, giving them the opportunity for the hearing. You have to follow the steps. I think, chief, did you have something that you wanted to add?
Well, I was gonna say to Mr. Evans' question, we do collaborate with the Juvenile Attention Center, with Chief Cockro, as well as the DA's office, with Mr. Nelson, as it relates to those students, students who are engaged in those criminal activities, and they do collaborate in terms of services that a student may need, that are appropriate as it relates to the incident. So, it's not always punitive. I think they do take an approach that addresses some of the emotional matters that pose a problem as well.
Good questions.
So, the second part of my presentation centers around things that are going to be new in BISD in the 25-26 school year. We're going to be sharing this graphic, which we've already parceled out several pieces of this graphic, but we're gonna push it out, you know, throughout the rest of the summer so that parents can be aware of things that are new. And of course, we want to make certain that students have a great first day of school and a smooth transition by making certain that students are actually registered for the 25-26 school year. As of, I think this was... Six twenty-four today, we have five thousand two hundred and eighty-three students registered for the 25-26 school year. So, we are partnering with several organizations who are supporting us through their backpack giveaway. So we are partnering with several organizations who are supporting us through their backpack giveaways and school supply drives to ensure that students before they receive these supplies that they are actually registered for school. We have a collaboration with Make It's Meet on July nineteenth will be at, uh, Marshall Middle School giving away backpacks. Uh, Legacy Backpack Giveaway is coming up next month. We've met, uh, with the, uh, organizers of Weasel and Friends, One Hundred Black Women Coalition, the City of Beaumont, uh, Gift of Grace, and the Swing Out Club. We've met with all of these organizations. I think with the exception of one, all the others have committed to ensuring that they promote and support students actually getting registered, parents completing the registration process prior to them receiving the backpack. So again, we are encouraging parents to make certain that they take care of getting their students registered. You can go to our website, you can go online. You need, if you need registration support, I know we have availability, I think, uh, this week or our, is our last week of onsite uh, registration support, but we, we have events, we'll have registration support at each one of these events coming up next month. And of course, leading up into the first day of school. So one thing, make certain you're registered. Next year, we want to make certain that, uh, we have, uh, to ensure a safe, on-time start, we have new online transportation registration. So parents, if students are planning to participate in transportation, if they meet the criteria for a bus, they need to make, you need to make certain that they register online, so they must complete the new online registration process. We've updated a few pieces of the dress code. We'll be pushing that, those pieces out in our, uh, back-to-school school zone. There will be, uh, a new, uh, One ID streamlined services process. So students will have One ID to ride the bus, to receive their meals, to actually, uh, check out books, to identify them at school. So it will be a streamlined process with One ID for students. And then, of course, we pushed out the new school start times. We're moving to a two-tier system, so school start times are changing. That information has already been pushed out, but we'll continue to push it out throughout the course of the summer so that all of our parents and families know. We're moving to a elementary tier and a secondary tier. So school times are changing. And then, of course, in Beaumont ISD, we will be phone-free in BISD. We are deep into implementation and execution for the fall of the yonder pouches. So students will not have access to their cellphones. They will be tucked into the yonder pouches from the beginning of the day until the end of the day with the expectation and anticipation of, you know, students being more engaged and focused in the learning environment. And then Class Dojo, we, uh, we're going to be a Class Dojo district for consistent communication and stronger partnerships and two-way communication with our families. And then the last, uh, one of the last things, there are other things, but the last is the Raptor system. We streamline volunteer access for actually checking into our facilities. So these are a few things that are new that we're going to be sharing with our families over the course of the next several months. And then I'd like to recognize, we have several new campus principals that I'd like to recognize, ask them to come up briefly. Where is Ms. Victoria Landry? Come on down, Ms. Landry. Ms. Landry is going to be the principal at Jones Clark. Next, we have Ms. Yolanda Valrie. She's going to be the principal at Fair Price Elementary. Next, we have Ms. Ronita Pickens. She's going to be the principal at Smith Middle School. Next, we have Ms. Carolynika Adams, but I think she may be at training. She's at training, but she's going to be the co-principal at Peach Pre-K through A Learning Center, responsible for sixth through eighth grade. And we have our lone gentleman, Mr. Paul Gobel, principal at Vincent Middle School. So we are really excited to have these new leaders in our district. We are excited about the work that they're going to do. They have all been dedicated individuals who have worked tirelessly in Beaumont ISD. They have done great work over the course of the years. That's why they're being promoted. So we are excited and happy and glad to welcome them to the leadership team in Beaumont. So I'd like to make another announcement. Uh, we have a, one of our team members is, is leaving the nest. Mr. Alan Devault is leaving the nest. Alan has been with us, I think Alan for what, four years, as our Director of Maintenance and Operations. And he has done a phenomenal, phenomenal job. You know, he is, he is going on to bigger and better things, but we are so grateful for the work that he has done. You know, he is truly valued as a team member in Beaumont ISD, and we sure hate to see him leave. But in his place, I'm excited to announce that Mark McClellan. Stand up, Mark. Stand up, Mark. Stand up, stand up. Mark has been with the district for over thirty years, and he is taking on the reins of being the Director of Maintenance and Operations. So, uh, Alan, you're leaving us in good hands. So that's the only reason I'm letting you go, just so you know, is because we're going to be in really good hands. All right. And last but not least, I want to recognize, and I don't want to cry, I really don't want to cry, because I'm not going to look at her. I'm just going to look ahead. But I really and truly want to recognize Dr. Anita Frank for stepping up to the leadership seat and sitting in my seat and her seat during a very difficult time for me. And to know that you have team members, Dr. Frank, leading the team in my place, and all of our team members who continue the work of the district at a very challenging time for me. I just wanted to publicly thank her and tell her how much I really and truly appreciate everything that she did. And I know, you know, she, she's, she's, she's quiet, she's grace under fire. You know, if, if, if things are coming, she's going to be professional, she's going to get the work done. She's going to make certain that everything continues to happen. And I just want to tell you, thank you so much for your work and your dedication to Beaumont ISD. And people can't, you know, you can't tell me things about people, because you know people, you work with people for years and you really know their character and their heart. And her heart is genuine and real, and I just want to tell her thank you. And again, thank you to my entire team who really and truly stepped up. You know, I didn't expect anything less, I will tell you. It's not that I expected anything less. I didn't expect people not to do their work. I didn't expect people not to do what it is that you're being paid to do. But to continue with the intensity and to go above and beyond speaks volumes of how you feel about our kids in our district. So again, thank you.
Dr. Allen? This may be out of protocol.
Yes, sir.
But could we recognize one more employee that's leaving us?
Who's leaving? Oh, my goodness.
Ms. Nizad.
Where is Ms. Nizad? Is Ms. Niz- Ms. Nizad, stand up, Ms. Nizad. Okay, Ms. Nizad. It's phenomenal. She's phenomenal. And I, let me tell you something, Ms. Nizad, you need to blame Mr. Maxwell for me not remembering, because I specifically asked Mr. Maxwell for you to remind me. I said, please remind me.
I'm reminding you right now, doc.
He's reminding me right now. So Ms. Nizad, Ms. Nizad came to us during COVID. And when I tell you she has been, you know, a phenomenal team member, just like Alan, just really came into the role and work and took care of business. And, you know, when you have those leaders who you don't have to worry about what they're doing, because they take, they take care of business. You know, she's been one of those leaders, so we hate to see her leave. But I think we have a new team member who's taking her place, and that's Mr. Chris O'Brien. So we welcome Chris O'Brien taking in, in that role. Okay, so now, my presentation is concluded.
All right, good evening to everyone. Let me start off by saying, Dr. Allen, do anything for you. Mentor, you have mentored me and I appreciate you, and you've taught me well, so. Tonight's School Board Outcome Goals Progress Monitoring Report will provide the end-of-the-year data for our pre-K through fifth-grade students in Circle, M-Class, and NWA MAP. Before you, you see the board outcome goals, and our target is this year, 2025. So we will actually see for board outcome goal one and two, if we have met our targets for our performance objectives and also for the, uh, board outcome goal itself. So, uh, board outcome goal one, the percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on star reading will increase from sixteen percent to fifty-five percent by June 2025. And board outcome goal two, the percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on star math will increase from eleven percent to fifty percent by June 2025. And again, sources of data, CLI engaged for pre-K in both reading and math, and then M-Class assessments for reading for K through five and NW, NWEA MAP for K five. So we'll start with pre-K. You are going to see data from beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year on each slide. You will also see comparisons of either an increase or a decrease in Tier One from BOY to MOY. What you see at the top is showing you if we have met the target for this year. If we did not meet the target, it still outlines if we increased or if we decreased. So when I look at pre-K, from beginning of the year to end of the year, fifty-four percent of our students were at Tier One. We ended with seventy-eight percent of our students in Tier One. We did not meet our target, but we did increase by twenty-four points. Pre-K this year was a, it, it was a little shocker, and then talking to principals, because normally with pre-K, we meet our targets. We have noticed that in pre-K, we are getting in more students, which we're, we're glad to get them in for the early start, but they are coming in with more challenges. For kindergarten, at the beginning of the year, thirty-seven percent of our students were, uh, scored in Tier One. At the end of the year, sixty-one percent of our students. Again, that is a twenty-four-point gain, and we did exceed our target here. In first grade, beginning of the year, forty percent in Tier One, end of the year, fifty-nine percent. So again, we did exceed our target of fifty-five percent. For second grade, beginning of the year, forty percent in Tier One, end of the year, fifty-four percent. We did not meet our target here. We were shy by one point, but we did see an increase. For our third-grade students, forty-two percent began the year at Tier One, forty-nine percent at end of the year. Our goal was to hit fifty percent. We did not hit that goal, but we did see an increase of seven points. For fourth grade and fifth grade, you do not see a goal or a target at the bottom, because the, uh, performance objectives go through really third grade, but we always like to see how our kids are progressing. So when you look at fourth grade, we did have an increase of seven points, so thirty-nine percent to forty-six percent. We can see that from middle of the year and end of the year, we did not see the gains that we wanted to see, but we did, we were able to maintain, uh, an, that increase from BOY to MOY. In fifth grade, forty-two percent of our students began the year at Tier One, and we ended with fifty percent. We did see gains. In meeting with principals, one thing that I did celebrate them for is that we saw gains across the board for M-Class. This is, I want to say, the first year where we saw everything light up green. So that tells us that even though we did not hit some of our targets, what we are doing is working. And I'm excited about that going into, uh, this new school year. Even at third, fourth, and fifth, where it is hard to close those gaps, we saw gains in kids moving into Tier One. Moving into Tier One means that they are becoming readers. Any questions before I go into the math data?
I know your, your star scores are very preliminary at this point, but how close did we come to meeting our goal? Just, because I know you've looked at it.
Yes, and, and we're actually going to, I'm going to show you board outcome goals at the end and where we landed for reading. Thirty-two percent of our kids, uh, are at meets grade level, preliminary scores. Thirty-two percent for third grade. We did not meet the target. But one thing I do want, I do want to celebrate is that we doubled from where we started. So in five-year, a five-year span, even though we did not meet the target, and I will also say, we never changed the target, even with COVID. The committee was, they, they agreed and held fast, too. We don't want to lower our target just because of COVID, but we did double from sixteen percent to thirty-two percent. This is just a summary. I love to look at this because it shows us the actual targets from twenty-two all the way to twenty-five, and where you can see the green are the areas where we hit targets for that year, and then you can see where we were below. I do like to pinpoint that even where we were below, we still made gains. And you can even see where we were below in some areas, but that next year, being able to, to hit the target. All right, so we move into math end-of-the-year data. Again, for pre-K, we use the Circle Assessment, and we did not hit our target. Pre-K, again, one of the first years, so we know we have some work for our kids that are going into kindergarten. And remember, every child does not attend pre-K. So the kids that we had this year at the beginning of the year, seventy-four percent were in, in Tier One, and at the end of the year, we ended at eighty-seven percent. We still had a thirteen-point gain. In kindergarten, okay, sixty-three percent of our students began the year. This is now a different assessment. This is NWA MAP, which is a nationally-normed assessment. They began sixty-three percent and ended fifty-five percent. Here, we see that we did opposite of what we want to do. And we, we saw a decrease of eight percentage points. For first grade again, fifty percent of our kids started out in Tier One. We ended with forty-two percent in Tier One. Again, we see a decrease. Second grade, forty-four percent began in Tier One, thirty-eight percent ended in Tier One, another decrease of six points. For third grade, forty-four percent of our students began the year in Tier One. We ended with forty-eight percent of our students. We did increase, okay, but we want to see more increase. We wanted to get to fifty percent. Fourth grade, you see a trend again, forty-three percent at the beginning, forty-two at the end, a decrease of one point. And then fifth grade, forty-one percent at the beginning, and then we see thirty-three percent at the end, a decrease of eight points. What I say to you is the same thing I've said to the principals. This cannot happen. This is something we will work on, and we have a plan. We have a plan to work on it, okay? Again, here is our summary. This summary is a little different, because with our math assessment, we actually changed. We were using STEM scopes for a while, then we moved to the MAPS assessment. So you're going to see, uh, it's, it's really not a, a good correlation. Okay, so what are our key actions? Y'all, excuse me, my sinuses are acting up. What are we going to do to address the data? What are we going to do to address the data? Not just for math, also in reading. When we look at our key actions for reading, one thing that the data tells us is what we are doing is working. So we are going to continue on the path. We know that our students need to strengthen their decoding skills. We need to build comprehension skills. We need to improve fluency. So teachers, we're going to work with them and make sure that we're strengthening phonics and phonemic awareness instruction. They have scripted lessons. They are utilizing to teach with Saxon phonics. We also have for third, fourth, and fifth, our phonics intervention for students. We want to also make sure that they're engaging in read alouds to build comprehension, and then targeted sight words. We will continue implementation of Saxon phonics, and Ni-House, Ni-House is used at pre-K. A mirror has been amazing that we started, okay? Kids can listen to, or have someone listen to them read with the AI, and we're going to continue that, and then again, Amplify Saxon Phonics and Circle Engage, more PD in those areas. One thing that we are doing with second through fifth, and I hope that you caught, normally we do pre-K through two. We're changing that, okay? Ms. Angelo has rearranged or restructured when we look at our RLA. So our supervisor, we now have a supervisor that's going to handle pre-K through first grade, and then a supervisor who will handle second grade through fifth grade. What did we learn? With our second grade students, we have to push them a little harder. So we are going to make sure that we're giving PD to those teachers, and they are really, we're going to stop babying, babying the kids, right, and hold them accountable, because they can do it. We have to push them. We're going to also make sure that we have cross-grade level observations, and again, targeted PD for reading. Phonics is going to be key, continuing with our groups, A-Mira again, and then Accelerator Reader, okay? We do want kids to fall in love with reading by reading independently. All right, yes ma'am.
What are you doing specifically to improve vocabulary? Reading with the kids, one of the things I notice is their vocabularies are so limited that even if they can decode a word, they have no idea what it is.
Yes, and so when we do our RLA instruction, part of it is, of course, vocabulary. We work with our kids. Sight words is something that we're targeting because we know that our kids are limited with vocabulary, but just making sure that we're working, building those skills built in within the lessons. So, and it is an area we have to target. We find that our kids don't have the experiences that other kids have. All right, any other questions for reading before we go to math?
I'm excited about the reading, the math that I'm scratching my head about.
Yes, principals are the same way. I told them that this year, guess what? We're going to make sure we're targeted. One thing that we are implementing is a new curriculum. With a new curriculum is a lift. It's not going to be easy. It's not. Principals know that we have to go in and we have to monitor. Not only do we monitor, we have to support our teachers. We have to give them the PD. We have to give them the coaching. I'm excited that we are actually, Ms. Angelo, I don't want to give the wrong services that we're using, Great Minds, right? Great. We've already had training with principals. Our teachers actually started, we had a pilot of the curriculum at the end of the year, and we have, which I'm so excited, because when you have a new curriculum, you have to have buy-in from the teachers. We have buy-in from the teachers. They saw the difference, okay? The curriculum is scripted. They have to internalize the lessons, make sure that we are, because with any scripted curriculum, you still, it has to meet the needs of your kids, so you need to know your kids and what to build in. So we're going to support our teachers with the lift of the new curriculum, and I do, you know, I'm not going to say it's a new curriculum, we're going to go backwards, we're going to take this curriculum, and we're going to move forward, okay? Zern is also the online part of the curriculum that we will also have, so it's going to work hand-in-hand, so where kids are struggling, Zern will be, they'll be able to go on and work on that online platform.
We think that it will make a difference next year. Is it going to take two or three years to really, Saxon phonics has taken a couple of years before we are seeing the kinds of results we see this year.
I'm going to stand bold, and principals, don't throw darts at me. I'm going to stand boldly here and say, it's going to make a difference this year. I think for our teachers, we have a lot of adjunct teachers. We have teachers that are teaching multiple, and, you know, in elementary. Some of our teachers, especially lower grades, are teaching everything. This is going to be a curriculum where they can pick it up and internalize, which we've already started with weekly planning meetings, so the internalization will not be new. And I really believe that it is going to, I'll say this, we shouldn't go backwards. We shouldn't go backwards. All right, also with math, we want to target skill intervention, so we started Delta Math last year. We did not start it at the beginning of the year. We started it, probably was January, and so, again, this is something we're going to start from the beginning, and we will work with K all the way through five, and this, it takes a lesson, the teacher teaches it to students, those, they can test out. So if they master the skill, they don't have to sit in the intervention. If they haven't, then they do. They get the targeted intervention that they need. So that's going to occur for K through five. And then, just working with our teachers, when we look at the MAPS assessment. MAPS assessment is pretty much spot-on when it comes to how our kids are performing on star. If our kids are at tier one in MAP, we're seeing that they are able to either approach, meet, or master the test. So that takes us to moving forward in board outcome goals. So later this evening, I will present the board outcome goals with the performance objectives for you to review and approve. When we look at reading, moving forward, the next five years, we're starting at 32%. We want to double, so get to 64% of our students scoring at meets or above third grade in reading and math. 26% of our students are preliminarily scoring at meets or above, and again, we want to double to 52% by 2030. CCMR, of course, 65 to 90%. You will look at some performance objectives for perception, and then again, we want to move to where we at least have 50% of our students in an A or B rated campus. So just a little preview. Any questions before I have Ms. Angelo come and talk about Blue Bonnet, which is how we're moving forward with curriculum and math?
Come on, Ms. Angelo.
So just as you said, President Segi, unacceptable data in math, and so we're going to do something about it. So we're bringing on our new Blue Bonnet curriculum. It is, you'll hear all these acronyms, OER, Open Education Resource. So this is the centralized published curriculum from TEA, rolling out in the coming year at all 14 of our elementary campuses. With me tonight is Ms. Danielle Guidry. Danielle's our new elementary math coordinator, and she's been on the job now three weeks. So we've really hit the ground running, and prior to that, an outstanding math coach at Caldwell, and also a teacher before that in Beaumont ISD. So she's going to go through just some of the components of the curriculum briefly. We'll give a quick overview of that.
All right, so first, what is going to come with the kit? Each of the teachers are going to come with the program and implementation guide, which is going to tell the teachers, you know, all about the different components and how to implement it successfully. They will all have a printed teacher's edition, as well as a digital version for each of the modules. They will have the assessments, so there's a booklet with the printed assessments. Each teacher will receive a manipulative kit that will be housed for a total of 24 students each. They will also receive the student workbooks for each of the students, as well as each of those components digitally. So you can see here is a guide of what they will receive. And then with the Blue Bonnet learning, it's going to help the teachers really get into the teaching, because we do have, you know, different levels of teachings. This is going to be to where the math lesson for kindergarten will be within a 50-minute time period, and for grades first through fifth grade, a 60-minute time period. It's going to help them to develop their fluency. It'll provide lots of practice, you know, that they did not receive before, and also to build the student confidence.
So we've been working on this all year, and we really started first getting information from TEA, attending webinars and trainings on the curriculum, and we started to say, this sounds like it's going to be right for us. We did a lunch and learn with our principals back in November, allowed a publisher, Great Minds, to come, give them introductory, like, lesson, have them sit as they would be a student in class, and kind of go through what a lesson would look like, and then they got the materials in their hands, the sample materials. Again, more trainings, sitting through webinars, and different sessions brought on by the region service center all the way through the spring, and then finally, we did initial, had to wait for a start to get over, we didn't want to distract anyone, had that to do, but once start was over, we pulled every single kender through fifth grade math teacher. They attended a half-day session at the annex, and they sat and reviewed the curriculum components. They sat in a model lesson from the student point of view, received the materials, and really got their hands in it. Can you give the next one?
All right, so whenever the teachers had received their training for the pilot, then they went back to into their classrooms in May, and they did the 10-day pilot with their students, and while they were piloting the materials, we did, you know, some walkthroughs to provide coaching support as needed, as well as to answer any questions. Once the 10-day pilot was over, then the teachers received a survey by me, so if they could complete anonymously. And with the survey results, you can see that, you know, what the teachers felt least comfortable with implementing was the concept development, which is the meat of the lesson. So using these survey results, the company, Great Minds, is going to be attending our curriculum conference, and they are going to be actually giving training sessions to the teachers over the concept development, as well as the fluency. And what they felt most comfortable with implementing was the fluency activities, which helps in the automaticity of facts, as well as, you know, just daily numeracy Then there were, was also a question about what the teachers felt was an aha moment while they were implementing the curriculum. So here are some things that the teachers had stated in the anonymous survey. And one of the things to point out is, you know, the fluency practice, how not only the teacher, but the students also loved the fluency practices. And then this last comment, this teacher talked about how the process is what mattered, not really what was at the end with the product. And this teacher also saw how, within the classroom, it really, you know, broadened the students with reasoning and communicating, and really made the students feel more confident in their learning.
And we had over, I think it was 40 teachers who responded, and when you bring in a new curriculum, you expect pushback. I mean, it's something new. They've been used to doing something for several years, but that feedback was very amazing to us. Like, we were really excited, because overwhelmingly, they were like, we love this, we get it, we can do this, and our kids are learning. So we will seek success with that. Excuse me. Our timeline continued. We had elementary campus leaders, they were, it's June 4th, they had received a half-day training, and then we're using the curriculum currently in summer school every day to give teachers more hands-on experience with it. And of course, as Danielle said, we'll have curriculum training at our conferences coming up in August, and many more after that. Oh, yes, money. So we can't, we can't just do this alone, me and Danielle. So we did apply for Lasso III funding, and we received initial funding for that. Received $500,000 to support this implementation. We had to pick an approved provider from a state list from TEA. We picked the publisher, Great Minds. They have created this curriculum, who better to help lead it? So we're very excited about that. And additionally, Carnegie Learning, we've been using for sixth through eighth math. It is flipping to Blue Bonnet Math, the same publisher, with about a 30% difference in it. They've made some refinements. Received $200,000 for approved provider support for that. So what does that work look like? I'm going to let you, Danielle, talk about what that approved provider will do.
Okay, so Great Minds will come in, and they will provide training to campus leaders, as well as the staff, the teachers, and they will come in to, for coaching, for PLC support, as well as internalizing their lessons.
And the transition plan, so you have that. It's a 25-page document. I don't think President Segi wants me to read that whole thing to you. So I just did a few slides that gave you an overview of that. We're required to present this to the board and to have it voted on tonight and approved, and then that will allow us to access all this wonderful funding that they are giving us. So, transition plan, just a few highlights. We've linked to the walkthrough tools that have been developed. We've linked to the responsibilities on the side of teachers, leaders, coaches, and for lesson internalization. Additionally, what does that look like for support? We know that this won't work unless there's consistent support, not just from the district, on-campus, outside providers, and what those roles are very clearly, and then how we're going to look at student work and the assessment data to help drive that instruction. As I said, this, you'll be voting on this later, I believe it's under action items, so if you have any questions about the plan, certainly, please ask us, but I have a little surprise that Dr. Allen didn't know yet. So 30 minutes ago, we just received an email from TEA. They're giving us additional Lasso funding, $744,000 to support this implementation. So, all in all, we will, we will have $1.2 million in grant funds to make this work, and we can't lose. We'll have lots of outside support. They'll be working with the campuses. They will have the supports they need to be successful. Yes.
I have a question, not for Ms. Angelo, but for Ms. Cheryl. How does this 1.2 million fold into the budget we're talking about now?
It's not a Florida miracle?
No. Yeah. Separate grant, so it does not go into the general fund. We access it, and we must use it in very specific ways. So certain percentages for approved providers, certain percentages, we can do some other contracted services, materials, training, and so on.
It's a state grant, and there's reporting that they will have to do to provide documentation of all the things that they do.
I guess my question is, you told us we had a budget of 180 something odd, million, but we've really got 100 and another million, too. How does, how does the community know, oh yeah, we've got this extra money? I mean, aside from Ms. Angelo standing there tonight and telling us, when principals have money added to their activity fund, that gets reported every month. So why don't we get something similar when we're adding money to the budget? And I understand it has to be spent very specific, grants tend to be line, 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 you have to do exactly what they tell you. But it's still money the district is getting. to do exactly what they teach you, but it's still money the district is getting, using, and, and supporting our kids with.
Correct.
So, why does the board not get that information as well?
We just have not presented, in the budget book that is on your desk, there, there are, there's a page where the district receives an additional eighteen million dollars in federal grants.
Well, just remember that we didn't see this budget until we walked in here tonight, so it's a little difficult for us to be up to date on what it says.
Well, I did present it as a slide in our budget workshop the previous month, in May, to let the board know that we do have, because I talked about the number of personnel units that we have paid for out of the federal grants, out of our IDAB, we use our title funding for different positions, that, additional positions that are not a part of the regular part, so we did discuss it at the last, and that it was the slide that was messed up. You may remember that I was trying to present it, and all the numbers went sideways, and then Ryan ended up fixing it for us. So we talked about it then, we, we, we can provide information to the board on different things, but the majority of the expenditures, like for IDAB formula, we use it for contracted services, for many different OTPT, that's occupational therapy, physical therapy.
Not this money.
Well, tonight, I will say, Ms. Hickman, y'all will be approving our contracts for Carnegie and for Great Minds that are substantial amounts, that are the amounts that we're required to spend in this part of the grant, the one I just received thirty minutes ago, that'll come at a different board meeting, because of course, we'll have to go through interviews with approved providers and all the different groundwork for that, to be in, in adherence to it, but we're happy to do a specific report for this substantial amount, you know, at the end of the year, and show exactly how it was allocated and used. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Angelo.
And I want Ms. Hernandez to expound on this. I think I had a similar question, not this one, but it's adjacent, that we as a board have been talking to Dr. Allen about a proficient grant writer, and you all are doing that on your own, and anything extra we can get, you know how to allot it or finagle it, so we're appreciative for what you have done, really, really, we are. So, that's something Ms. Hernandez said she would kind of be looking at. We had that during our budget workshop, that how the grants that we receive helps the overall budget.
Additional funding, yes.
So you may wanna say a little something about that, to clear the air, just clear the air.
We have a director of federal grants, and she's been basically our grant writer. She's familiar with how things work. This one is a state grant, though, and things come up and become available. Our regular grants, like title, those are recurring grants over and over, and there's, you know, we, we qualify because of our at-risk student population, and sometimes our funding changes because the government changes what we fund, but every opportunity, I think, that comes up, that our, our fifth director has been applying for, the ones that we qualify for.
I'm not questioning that.
Right, but I'm answering, Ms. Spooner.
That it's just sort of out there. I mean, I feel, having been a principal, and having had to account for every penny that somebody gave us, I don't understand why the district doesn't have similar requirements for the board.
I think that this is something that hadn't been requested before, and I think if this is a report that the board wants to see on how we actually spend our federal dollars, which you do know every purchase over fifty thousand dollars, because that's included in the board book, but if that's something that we wanna add to, we can definitely develop a, a summary or report on, or quarterly, on how we're spending our federal money. I mean, it's nothing new, we've always presented, and I apologize for the lateness of the board book, but as you recall, I shared in the budget workshops, in the small groups, that we were working till the last minute to get this completed, and we completed it today because we were trying to finalize the revenue to determine what we could afford for our compensation for our teachers. But the amount that we received is in, is in the board book, is, I'm sorry, is in the proposed budget every year, the projected amount, but if that's a request, we certainly can, I don't see that being an issue with adding a report, it's just never, it's never been requested, and it's not in an attempt not to be transparent, this has never been, this has never been requested, so since it's requested, I think we can do it.
And I'm not speaking to the title grants. We know those come in, and they are itemized up to a point in our information, but this, this, a million point two.
These grants are as well, they, they fall under the same protocols.
Where was it gonna get put? And how are we gonna know?
Hold up, we can, we can kick this around like a soccer ball all night, but we're not gonna do that. Does anybody have any specific questions of Ms. Angelo about the program, or Ms. Guidry, about the program?
And President Segi, I just want to interject right there, in our, we had small groups, but in our training, just to appease, trust it.
I don't need appeased with.
Well, that's okay, I'll use another term, but, but back to, we were told by Dr. Allen that due to wanting this correct without any, going back printing is so expensive, that they will be delayed a bit, but she did inform us on all of this, that we could get our budget.
Yes, and additional grant was just known about thirty minutes ago. It's kinda hard to include that in a report, if you just got it thirty minutes ago.
That's not what I, never mind.
Once again, does anyone have any questions of Ms. Angelo or Ms. Guidry? Thank you. We come to the time for public comments. Ms. Antoine, is there anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
The board will now hear public comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. This portion of the meeting is set aside for parents, students, employees, and community members to speak to the board about any matter of interest to them pertaining to the school program. Each person who has signed up by four thirty PM yesterday may speak for no more than two point five minutes. Those who have signed up after that time and prior to the public comments today will be allowed one point five minutes. During public comments, the board will listen, but it is forbidden by the Texas Open Meeting Act from discussing any topic raised or making any decision unless the matter is already on the agenda for this meeting. The board recommends speakers that public comments is not the time to bring to board complaints about a particular program, employee, or student. Should a speaker's remarks include complaints directed at a particular student, employee, or program, I will respectfully act that the individual stops speaking and utilizes the board's adoptive grievance procedures. Ms. Antoine, can you call the first person? How are you this evening?
Good evening, I'm doing well, thank you. Kind of adjust, is that okay?
That's fine.
Good evening, thank you for a few minutes of your time. I just completed my thirtieth year teaching with the school district. Three years ago, due to a continuing bus driver shortage, I trained and became a BISD bus driver, in addition to my full-time teaching position. I was recently made aware that last year's pay increase for all BISD employees was not applied to my bus driving position, because it is considered part-time. As a teacher driver, I am working twelve to thirteen hours per day for our school district. It was very disappointing to hear that the school board did not value the dedication part-time drivers are demonstrating to assure students arrive safely at school and back home. In the coming year, in the coming school year, I would like to see the BISD school board thoughtfully consider raising all bus driver pay to twenty-four dollars per hour to attract and retain a full staff of drivers for our school district. I respectfully request the board use a portion of the support staff retention allotment recently passed as a part of House Bill Two, to fund raises for part-time, non-administrative staff not covered under the teacher retention allotment. I look forward to the money overall allocated in House Bill Two being used to pay, to, for pay increases for all BISD employees working directly with students on a daily basis. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have copies of my statement that I'll give with, to Ms. Antoine, in case she wanted to refer back to it.
Yes, ma'am. How are you, Ms. Moore?
I'm good, if I could just have a moment. At least a specific people first.
First, thank you for letting me come and speak with you again. My first is to request cameras in every single special needs classroom across the district. My second is to request an actual policy to be made within the district to remove an accused teacher from the classroom pending investigation. I have provided you all with a copy of the recent examiner newspaper, in which myself and two other moms point out abuse and neglect in special needs classrooms across the district. My daughter has a face, and her photo is in there for you and you only. I want you to know my daughter. Ms. Brooks pointed out that there's fifty-nine self-contained classrooms within the district. The TEA states that board members are allowed to request cameras in special needs classrooms without having to be a parent in a particular room. I have two covered, I'll request those on my own. You could separate that request amongst yourselves, and only have to request ten each, or somebody can spearhead it and take all of them. I would also like to point out again that cameras in the classroom are not only meant to protect the students from possible abuse, but to shed light on perpetrators, as well as protect the district from false allegations. Which brings me to my second point. I would like to ask the board to create and encourage the district to have an actual policy that removes accused teachers from the classroom pending investigation. The current BISD thing, evaluate, policy evaluates allegations on a case-by-case basis, based on the merit and severity of the allegation, and I would like to ask you, what removes a child's merit? Because my child clearly told me what happened, and I believe her. BISD may have concluded that nothing happened with this particular teacher, but the teacher was never removed from the classroom the entire time, while my child stayed at home because I could not let her go to class back into a room with no cameras, and a principal, instead of doing his mandated job to report the abuse of the teacher, decided to call CPS on me instead. BISD, again, may say nothing happened, but the BISD Police Department has forwarded the case to the DA for felony child abuse charges. BISD has failed my child and three others that I'm aware of, and instead of standing up for our kids, they are moving them to other classes. I thank God that my child will be going to Regina next year, but what about the kids in Amelia? I'm making you aware of the issues.
Ms. Moore, that's the end of your time. How much more do you have to say?
One, one, one statement, that's all. I'm making you aware of the issues, and I'm asking you for a much-needed solution. And, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll end there, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing, Parker?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Allen. My name is Parker Gerleffson, I'm a proud 2023 graduate, Westbrook High School, the place I'm honored to still call home in many ways. I'm here tonight not just as a former student, but as someone who was personally impacted by one of the most beloved and unforgettable figures to ever walk the halls of Westbrook, Pat Thomas. Tonight, I'm asking you to consider naming the Westbrook tennis courts in his honor. He was someone who truly embodied the spirit of Westbrook. Most of us knew him as PT, Pat, Coach Pat, Mr. Clean, or Snow Pat. Yes, he had more nicknames than most celebrities. He made a personal connection with just about everyone he met. He wasn't just a coach, he was a campus personality, a stand-up comedian, and a walking bundle of school spirit. I don't know many teachers that sought to build relationships with students who walked the halls alone, or sit alone at lunch, but Pat did. Pat knew their story. He had a legendary sense of humor, always armed with a joke, a witty comeback, or sarcastic remark, that somehow made your whole day better. He connected with everyone, not just as tennis players, but students across all corners of campus. Whether you were on his team or just walking by his classroom, he made time for you, he remembered your name, he cared. But behind the jokes was a man deeply divided, devoted to his school and to this district. He spent decades investing in Westbrook. When things got tough, and they did, he stayed. When he could have walked away for something easier, he didn't. He believed in our school, and more importantly, he believed in the students in it. That kind of dedication and loyalty to a district through all its ups and downs is rare, and it deserves to be recognized. This isn't just about putting a name on a tennis court, it's about preserving a legacy, a legacy of laughter, loyalty, mentorship, and heart. Coach Thomas was part of what made Westbrook feel like home. Thank you for your time and consideration, I look forward to working with you all to make this happen. Thank you.
For a minute and a half, Robin Dashatell.
I wanna first, I wanna first give an honor to God, and I wanna thank each and every one of you for your services to our students and to the schools. Today, I want to proclaim that our schools will be transformed and reformed for the better. So, lift up your heads, O'you gates, open up your ancient doors, so that the King of Glory may come in, the Lord God Almighty. I yield back to rest of my time.
Thank you, Robin.
That concludes requests for public comments.
Formational items, update on personnel.
Good evening, board. You have in front of you this evening a listing of newly hired and separated employees for the month of May. As you review, despite all of the valedictions and promotions that Dr. Allen offered, resignations are actually down by twenty-two percent this year. Now, that may be a little ripe, as teachers do have until June twenty-eighth to resign without penalty, and so I don't have any firm numbers on what the, what the resignations are, but I will have something to offer for you next month. Any questions?
No questions. Why are you giving them a heads up on what they? Report of tax collections.
For the month of May, the tax office collected just over five hundred seventy-two thousand dollars in maintenance and operations taxes, and just over a hundred and twenty-three thousand in debt service, and we're ninety-six point forty-four percent collected. And for the general fund summary, we have year-to-date revenue of a hundred and sixty-one million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, and we have total expenditures of a hundred and seventy million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars, and we still have out. thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars, and we still have outstanding purchase orders of four million, two hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and ten. Now that we do have the end of the year ADA, we'll be able to record the actual state revenue that the district has earned. For campus activity funds, they collected four hundred thousand and eighty-six dollars during the month of May. And then we have a number of monetary donations to the Career and Technical Center from D. Richard Real Estate, fifty dollars, Lawrence Evans, twenty-five dollars, Emma Brown, thirty dollars. Regina Howell P T A donated forty-five thousand dollars to Regina. Architectural Alliance donated thirty-five hundred dollars for the coaches' rings for the Westbrook Winning State, and then Albert Turner Campaign Fund donated two hundred twenty-five dollars towards the same, and the campaign for Robin Mouton donated two hundred and seventy-five dollars for the same, and Arlene LeBlanc, fifty dollars for the same. And then we received the John P. McGovern Foundation for the Child Nutrition Department in the amount of five thousand dollars. And then we have a number of donated items for the Career and Technical Education Center. Alice Moore donated a stainless steel cutting board that valued at forty-five dollars. Belinda Clark donated Farberware stand mixer at the value of two hundred dollars. Joy and Will Crenshaw donated the neatest nineteen forty-eight Jeep Willy's station wagon that was kind of like a, a kit car, and it was valued at twenty-five thousand dollars. So the kids will get to work on it and, and do some neat things with that. Keys on the Couch, Tashara Keys donated three gift cards that valued at seventy-five dollars. Do Good Credit Union donated seven backpacks, one hundred dollars. Mark Nelson, an H E B gift card for thirty dollars. Mr. and Mrs. J. Walker Senior gift card for twenty-five dollars. Dell Lynn Candles and et cetera, a gift card for thirty dollars. Dr. Joseph Provo, a gift card for forty-five dollars. Carla Robinson, a Visa gift card that was tw- worth twenty-five dollars. Manuels Barbecue Catering, a Visa gift card for thirty dollars. Sean Weblock, a gift card for twenty-five dollars. Realty Depot, Brandon Johnson, Visa gift card for twenty-five dollars. Above all taxes, Joy Terrell, a gift card for twenty-five dollars. Mr. and Mrs. Sam Jenkins, a gift card for seventy-five dollars. And then First Security Bank donated to Guess Elementary some cases of water valued at two hundred and thirty dollars. And Arkema of Beaumont donated twenty cases of water that was valued at a hundred and fifteen dollars. Then the French High Family Friends Community donated to Martin two bicycles and the valued at a hundred dollars and fifty gift cards that were valued at seven hundred dollars. And then H E B Plus donated gift cards that were valued at a hundred and fifty dollars. And then the H E B also donated to Blanchett Elementary gift cards for a hundred and fifty dollars. So we've got some really big supporters. And that is the end of my presentation.
Any questions for Ms. Hernandez? We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any items off the consent, consent agenda for discussion?
I think it's number eight, the item that talks about the.
It's turnaround.
The turnaround plans.
It's number six.
Number six. Item six is removed. Get a motion on the rest of the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda outside of item six.
Motion has been made by Mr. Evans and second by Mr. Reese. End of discussion. All those in favor, right hand. Motion carries six-zero. Okay, let's hit item six, let's discuss the improvement plans.
So, Mr. President, I recommend that the board approve the turnaround plans for the following campuses, Fair Price Elementary, Jones Clark Elementary, Smith Middle School, and Beaumont United High School. I'll ask Dr. Papillon to come on forward.
Good evening, board.
How are you, Dr. Papillon?
I am doing well, thank you for asking. We are here this evening to discuss the campus turnaround plans for the campuses just mentioned by Dr. Allen, and we do have the principals here in the audience, so I will ask those principals to come to the front and have a seat here. When we get to that part of the presentation, we will ask those principals to approach the podium. I would also like to invite Mrs. Courtney Laverne, who is our innovation specialist, to also come to the front. Thank you. Mr. Maxwell is passing out a copy of the presentation that we'll discuss here, but in your board books, you guys have a copy of the full turnaround plan as well as each community presentation that was given during the public hearing. But you can refer to the presentation being passed out by Mr. Maxwell, thank you. So what is a campus turnaround plan? It's a strategic document that is required by the Texas Education Agency for our schools that receive two consecutive years of unacceptable performance ratings. It outlines specific actions and interventions that improve student outcomes and school performance. What is the purpose of our turnaround plans? The primary goal of our turnaround plan, sometimes referred to as a TAP, is to address those root causes of the low performance and implement strategies that significantly improve student achievement and school effectiveness. Here on the screen, you do see the principals that have been assigned to work with these campuses. We have our veteran principal, Ms. Tamara Long. We have our newly named principal of Smith Middle School, Ms. Renita Pickens. Our newly named principal for Jones Clark, Dr. Victoria Landry, and we have Ms. Yolanda Valerie, principal at Fair Price Elementary. Due to the release and the approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three accountability scores, it triggered these campuses to have to complete what is referred to as our turnaround plan. Again, you all have access to all of the full turnaround plans, but I would like to draw your attention to our Effective Schools Framework. Our Effective Schools Framework is a framework that is designed by the Texas Education Agency to guide campuses as they develop school improvement plans. We've approved our targeted improvement plans, you've heard of the TIP, and now we have our turnaround plans. So within each lever, which there are five, five levers consist of essential actions. So each of our levers are, we dig a little deeper and we go into specific actions where campuses can focus their efforts. So when we look at lever one, we have strong school leadership and planning, which means that we're working to build capacity in our campus leadership teams, developing systems for those teams. When we look at our strategic staffing, we're looking at how our campuses are recruiting, how they're retaining their staff. When we look at lever three, which is positive school culture, we focus on school climate, we look at discipline, and we look at attendance rates. When we look at lever four of the Effective Schools Framework, we have high-quality instructional materials. Ms. Angelo stood here and talked about our HQIMs that we are implementing on our campuses, and so we want to ensure that our HQIM, that's approved, that it is implemented effectively with fidelity. We also want to make sure that all of our lessons that we put in front of our students are aligned and that they're grade level appropriate. When we look at our lever five, which is effective instruction, we're looking at those things such as coaching models on the campuses, instructional strategies, and our weekly planning meetings, also our PLCs, which is our professional learning communities. When you review your turnaround plans, you'll see that primarily our campuses are focusing heavily on campus climate and culture as well as effective instructional practices, which we feel like will help us move our campuses forward. And so at this time, we do have all four of our campuses here, and I will give each of them an opportunity to discuss just a few areas of their turnaround plans with you all, and I'll stand here with them, but if you have any questions, please pose them or you can wait till the end of the presentation. So at this time, I would invite Ms. Tamara Long to come here to the podium with me, please. Principal of Beaumont United High School, home of the mighty Timberwolves.
Good evening, everyone. Currently at Beaumont United, and we all know this TAP was from twenty-twenty-three, but what we're currently working on is our partnerships with Public Impact or Opportunity Culture, and that's working on our instructional pieces to coach and improve tier-one instruction. So with that model, we're providing the best of both worlds with our coaches. They're having the opportunities to also go in the classroom and teach and also come out and coach. So that's one way we're addressing the, excuse me, one way we're addressing our TAP. Also, with student leadership, and I'm kind of skipping around, but with our student leadership development, this year was our first year working with the Eric Thomas Leadership. And so with that, we're working on culture and climate, and this year it was very effective because we looked at the areas of student attendance, character development, also SEL and student grades or academics. And then some ways that we are improving as well is with our professional development. And this summer, we're going to have a summer bridge for our coaches and our department leads to help with our partnership with Public Impact and strengthen our coaching abilities with those coaches. And that's our TAP for Beaumont United.
Let me ask a question. How much community involvement did you have over there at Beaumont United? Community involvement, outside partners?
Um, we had several partners. One partnership was with you, with our.
Not really talking about me, but.
Yeah. But we had several partnerships. We also had a parent that came in weekly and spoke with our students in ISS. We had circle times in our ISS and CRD, and she was, that was another partnership that we also had at Beaumont United.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Long. Thank you, Ms. Long. Okay, now we'll have Ms. Renita Pickens come up, home of the mighty Buffaloes.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Allen. Okay, for the turnaround plan for Smith Middle School, we're going to implement data-driven multi-tier systems of support. We're going to utilize high-quality instructional materials. Teachers will receive upfront and ongoing professional development to ensure the fidelity of the newly adopted curriculum, Blue Bonnet. The partnership was, we're going to partner with consultants to build instructional leadership capacity, and it'll just be, we'll be ongoing building capacity with our teachers to ensure that they understand how to implement the high-quality instructional materials.
Any questions? What do you need from us?
At this time, I don't need anything.
Nobody ever can answer that question. You got a whole bunch of needs, but when you ask that.
Well, just the community support.
Oh, no, you blew your chance. Now you can go on.
Thank you, Ms. Pickens. Okay, I'm going to invite Dr. Landry here to the mic, please. Jones Clark, home of the mighty Cardinals. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so at Jones Clark Elementary, our strategy is going to focus on reading and math because that is the root cause of our low academic performance. And so we are going to be implementing HQIM, not only for Blue Bonnet math, but Blue Bonnet reading as well. And so we will also have professional development ongoing at the district level and campus level throughout the year to make sure teachers are supported in implementing those curriculums. And of course, data analysis, looking at all of our assessment screeners, diagnostic assessments, summative and formative assessments to make informed decisions. We will also have a structured intervention block daily where we're focused on intervening for those students who have deficits in their learning for reading and math. And then, like the others said, we will be building capacity within our building, focusing on weekly planning meetings and lesson internalization so that we can strengthen teachers' practices and lots of ongoing coaching. Any questions?
What you need?
I need, and, and the doc, I mean, Derwin Samuel's has been so helpful with this. We need staff. And so I am currently staffing Jones Clark Campus, so if you know any teachers that are willing to work, I'm looking for someone who's passionate and they're driven, and like I stated, we're going to coach them, and we're going to build them up and strengthen their practices so that we can be effective for the students at Jones Clark. And so that's the main thing now is staffing.
We're going to work to see if we can get some rural volunteers over there.
Yes, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Landry. And last but not least, we do have Ms. Yolanda Valerie coming to us for Fair Price Elementary, home of the Lions.
Good evening. So the Fair Price Elementary, we're going to focus on addressing effective instructional practices across all grade levels. Teachers are our greatest resource in that classroom, and when they do their jobs well, they can even take mediocre instructional material and make it, make something happen out of it. So we're going to invest a lot of time in our, building our teachers to where that they they're able to deliver the, the content and they're, they're, they feel comfortable and they're supported. We're going to build capacity through coaching and professional development, and we're going to do whatever we can to try to retain teachers because it's difficult to build your campus for growth if you're starting from scratch every year with, with personnel. So we're going to really put a lot of energy and support into that area of instructional practices, and we're going to utilize data analysis to drive the instruction on a frequent basis instead of just not by the nine weeks. We're going to try to do that on a more frequent basis so that we can do some real intervention.
What you need?
I need, considering that the majority of my staff is new, I have one coach, and we, but we have a big lift, especially with a brand-new math curriculum. If I could any way get an additional coach. To help us build this capacity on this campus so that the teachers feel comfortable enough in what they're doing to return and continue growing, so that's what I need.
I like you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I realize that you all are not ready to actually present your plan tonight. We kind of put you on the spot, but I thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the campus improvement plan? No one? Can I get a motion on item six?
Mr. President, I move that we approve school improvement turnaround plans.
I'd second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Evans, second by Ms. Avery. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero. We are now ready for our action items.
Mr. President, I recommend that the board approve budget amendments from the General Fund Twelve and accept amendments from Special Revenues Thirty-five, Thirty-six, Thirty-seven, Thirty-eight, Thirty-nine, Forty, and Forty-one.
Can I make a mo-, can I get a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move that we approve budget amendment GF Twelve and accept amendments SR Thirty-five, SR Thirty-six, SR Thirty-seven, SR Thirty-eight, SR Thirty-nine, SR Forty, and SR Forty-one.
Is it second?
Second.
Motion is made by Mr. Evans, second by Ms. Spooner.
Thank you, Mr. Segi. This is the last budget amendment in this fiscal year. We're asking the board to approve GF Twelve, which in. We're asking the Board to approve GF-12, which increases our revenue. We received some insurance settlements for some vehicle claims in the amount of $5,728. It appropriates to the Transportation Department $4,134 and the Maintenance Department $1,594 so that they can get those vehicles repaired. And then the rest of them are moving within functions. And so the, the overall net is zero. And then the SR-35 through SR-41, these are amendments that the Board, they're moving funds between functions in Title I, Title I ESF, IDAB formula, Title II, Title III, Title IV, and then our DEV Co-op. We're reallocating funds to pay some invoices for RDSBD.
Discussing the closed session that needs to be discussed now.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. On the agenda item regarding a demand related to 1882 agreements, I move the Board authorize the district's attorney to proceed with third future schools as discussed in closed session.
Get a second. Motion was made by Ms. Evans, second by Mr. Reese. Discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six-zero. Item three.
Mr. President, I recommend that the Board approve purchases over $50,000 from the General Fund in the amount of $490,995.51, from the instructional materials allotment of $234,243.75, from federal funds in the amount of $274,102.67, and from state grant funds in the amount of $355,000.
There a motion?
I move that we approve purchases over $50,000 from the General Fund, IMA funds, federal funds, and state grant funds.
Second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Spoon, uh, Mr. Evans and second by Ms. Spooner.
Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the General Fund, we're asking the Board to approve purchases with Mannings Offices Solutions. We are asking for classroom furniture at Homer Elementary in the amount of $106,064.20. And then for Odom Middle School and Marshall Middle School, new teacher desk in the amount of $57,603. And then with the Flippin Group, some curriculum for the Capturing Kids Hearts Training Program in the amount of $84,500. This is a continuation of what we did for the previous year. And then our Waste Management Disposal Services. This is going to be for a fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, so it will begin in July. So we're asking the Board to approve it now in the amount of $242,828.31. It will come out of their next year's budget. And then instructional materials allotment, we're purchasing social studies through Studies Weekly in the amount of $234,243.75. And then for our federal funds, we have three purchases. Enome with special services, it's a renewal of the Goal Book Kit Toolkit in the amount of $85,680. Pocket Nurse for the Career and Technical Center, they're $73,402.26 is out of federal funds. And then $2,476.65 is from the General Fund. But the total purchase order will be $75,878.91. And then we have Hahnemann Publishing. It's a continuation for the Phonics Program, $112,543.76. And then the last two were the state grant funds through the, those Lasso funds that were just awarded to the district. We're asking the Board to approve Great Minds for $255,000 to provide that support. And Carnegie Learning in the amount of $100,000.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six-zero.
Mr. President, I recommend that the Board approve the ordinance and resolution adopting the twenty-five, twenty-six budgets for the General Fund, Child Nutrition Fund, and the Debt Service Fund.
Can you get a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that we adopt an ordinance and resolution adopting the twenty-five, twenty-six budgets for the General Fund, Child Nutrition Fund, and Debt Service Fund.
I second. I second.
Been moved by Ms. Evans, second by Ms. Avery.
The Exhibit A presents all three of these budgets together and also shows the total enrolled by student for each of the breakdowns for these. And these are the different functions that we're asking the Board to approve for these grants. I would like to point out on, I mean, for these funds, at the time when we're asking the Board to adopt the budgets, this is June, we have just received our planning amounts for our federal funds. So we don't have time to, to give you a budget because the, the leaders of those grants are actually applying for the grants and deciding how they're going to be able to allocate funds. But we would be happy to bring a federal grants budget in the future so that the Board can know where all of our money is being spent and how it's being spent. If that would help.
We would like that.
Okay. It will probably be most likely after it's awarded by TEA. So we'll have to wait for that and once their, their application is approved.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six-zero.
Mr. President, I recommend that the Board approve the resolution authorizing participation in the Connect Investment Trust.
Motion?
Yes, sir. I move that we approve resolution authorizing participation in the Connect Investment Trust.
The second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Spooner.
This is another avenue for the district to place funds in investment. And one of our, our strategies with our investment policy is diversification. So rather than keeping all our, our funds in just a couple of pools, this will give us another avenue that we can get greater returns than what we're getting in the pools with a consultant to help guide us and to know where we're supposed to be able to put our funds. And they will also assist us with preparation of our reports to make sure that we're complying with what our policy says and then also what the law says and what is required.
I'm curious, I may have asked you before, what is the Connect Investment Trust?
It is, it's.
Oh, trick question, ma'am.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good trick question. It's, it's, it's like a, it's kind of like the pools. You, you can invest your money in like a, a, an organization and they manage your funds. And they look at your investment policy to make sure that they're complying with what you can invest your funds in. And they don't, they don't like guarantee you a rate of return, but they have different areas that they can invest money and get a, a greater return than just putting it in the pools. Sometimes you may tie it up for a year instead of just having it so liquid. We have our, our, our pools or I can pull that money out each day, whatever I need. Sometimes if you make it for a little bit longer, like if you buy a CD or something, they, they can have strategies to earn more money for the district.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
Item six, delegate, designate a delegate and an alternate to the Texas Association of School Board 2025 Delegate Assembly. Can I get a motion?
I move that Joe Evans be our delegate.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We also need an alternate.
I move that we select trustee Woodrow Reese as the alternate.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Hickman that. It's been moved by Ms. Hickman and second by Ms. Spooner that we designate Mr. Evans as the primary and as our secondary alternate that it was been moved by Ms. Reese. And second by Ms. Spoon, it was moved by Ms. Spooner that Mr. Reese be the alternate representing us on the TASB Delegate Assembly. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six-zero. Item seven, approve a revision of the Board policy BE Local.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hickman, second by Mr. Evans.
So this recommendation is based on just previous discussions so that we can better utilize and manage our, our time to begin at 4:30, our closed sessions at 4:30, rather than the 5:00 PM start time to allow for more time to continue to adjust, I mean, to discuss items in closed session and also improving our timeliness and promptness in beginning our regular meeting.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six-zero.
Mr. President, I recommend that the Board approve the Blue Bonnet Math Transition Plan.
Get a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Hickman and second by Mr. Evans.
So as we discussed in our cabinet report, we're asking for the Board to approve the Blue Bonnet Transition Plan located in your board book. Are there any questions regarding the plan?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries six-zero.
Mr. President, I recommend that the Board approve, the Board adopts the twenty-five, twenty-two-five to twenty-thirty Board Outcome Goals, Annual Performance Targets, Closing the Gap Student Group Targets, and Associated Yearly Performance Objectives.
We want to table, go ahead, Joe. We want to discuss those. Those targets. We're going to table it. Is there any other board, board business? Okay, here we go. Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you, Dr. Frank and, and team and, and entire district. Congratulations on the, the reading gains. I am concerned about our math scores, but I'm, but I'm confident in your abilities to, to remediate our students and, and get them moving on the right track. I also have high hopes for the Blue Bonnet curriculum, so, so good luck on that, Ms. Angelo and, and all the good people for, for our district. I hope we can do something for bus drivers and, and whoever the, the teacher slash bus driver is, God bless her. Yes, so yes, give her a round of applause. If there are any more educators who want to drive school buses, I think Dr. Allen and Mr. Samuel have you. And lastly, thank you, Board, for sending me back to the Delegate Assembly. I thoroughly enjoy the process. Woodrow will be there as an alternate. And Ms. Avery, we will try to loop you into that process as a new trustee if you have time with, with the training to, to learn more about it. So hopefully next time you can attend as a delegate. Yes, ma'am. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for the, Ms. Desotell, thank you very much tonight for your comments. Appreciate that very much, Ms. Desotell. Is that your last name? Desotell? Oh, that's not her? Oh, I thought that was her, I'm sorry. Congratulations to the new principals. I anticipate seeing some great things coming from you all. Thank you all for the campus improvement plan and let's get these things done this year. Let's get these, let's get it moving. Thank you very much.
Spooner?
Oh, I'm so surprised. Wow, you're kind of, okay, all right, thank you. I want to just say tonight that I am so proud of our district and that is inclusive. That's everyone and everything that all of you are doing because the buzzword right now is unity. And we cannot do anything divided. A divided house soon will perish or fall. And so I'm glad that we are working together. Now, I hope I'm not out of order because our Director of Communications, Ms. Jackie Simeon, I don't know if I'm outdated, but as I can recall, the district received numerous awards for all of their many endeavors. If you just come to the mic like, come on down, come on, come on. Let's give her a hand. She puts us on the map. And I just want to say, and I can say Jackie, I, I just want to say that I heard the news, I read different things and I was so proud, but when we did our, when you did our recognitions, I said, wow, she didn't say anything. So at this time, will you enlighten us on what has been done by your department? Thank you.
Yes, the Beaumont ISD Community and Media Relations Department, two weeks ago, received a couple of first-place awards and several other awards from the Press Club of Southeast Texas. And it is just a joy to represent and tell all of the wonderful stories happening in our school district with our teachers, our staff, and our students. Thank you for the recognition.
And congratulations. Ms. Hickman?
I just want to first say to Ms. Pickens, Mr. Segi asked you what you wanted from us, but I'm going to tell you what I think we, Smith needs more than anything else, and that's the continuity of leadership. If we could keep, get you to stay there for more than two years, it would be wonderful for all of us, but especially for the children at Smith. So we hope you'll be there.
That's what I'm talking about.
I dare you to stay as long as I stayed at Odom.
Show me what you're working with.
I, I also want to say I'm really excited about the Blue Bonnet Math Series. It has been a difficult obstacle to overcome and I think perhaps we have the, what we need now to, to move on. Congratulations on reading. Have a great summer.
Okay, Mr. Reese, our secretary.
Okay, well, I want to thank the Board for being, they're really on top of things. Ms. Avery, I think she's going to be a great asset to this Board. She's smart. I saw her at a couple of events. And she's dropping the mic. She was up there. That's a little something else. But I think it is just, it's just fun because a lot of times I sit back. I don't, I don't, I don't motion and I don't second. I let everybody get a chance to do it. I've done this twenty-two years, so. But thank you for coming to our district and getting on the Board. And there's going to be other positions that come open. But I don't want to be Secretary of my life. I've been everything on the boards, I guess you can be. But thank you, Mr. President, for running a good darn meeting tonight. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Sue?
I have one more person.
I have one more person that I need to recognize. And this is what I, this is what I get for not writing it down. But Ms. Delana Barbe, where is Ms. Barbe? Ms. Barbe is retiring. Ms. Barbe is retiring at the end of this month. She has been with the district for, for several years in, in a couple of capacities, but she has done a wonderful job as our Director of Federal Programs. So we thank her so much for her service. And you know, she's going into the good life. You know, she's going into the life that we are all aspiring to get to. So thank you to Ms. Barbe. She will surely be, be missed. And just again, thank you so much to the team. You know, this is your last couple of days of work. And then hopefully, you'll have the opportunity to relax. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Yes, sir. Let's go ahead. I am so sorry. I know I'm a little bit out of line. But last night at the Neighborhood Association in, in Northland, we did a challenge. I did a challenge. And I asked everyone there, and I want to ask everyone here, while you're gone, every day, anytime you see anyone, say something good about BISD. Do that challenge, please. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Wow. You know, I'm, I'm hoping that I can continue to push the district forward as I follow the footsteps of Ms. Hickman. She's done a great job as the president of the board. And it's my hope that I can continue to push the ball forward. And to you all, to the staff, you do a great job, a phenomenal job of supporting all of the things that BISD has to do. And to the principals, I apologize. We didn't let y'all go earlier. I missed my mark on that. I won't do it again. But, but you, you all are the glue to what makes this district function. We're going to be asking you to do just a little bit more. Need you to press, enjoy your vacation. You're going to need it. Because we're going to be asking a little bit more. I have all faith and confidence in what's going on with BISD. And Ms. Desatell just confirmed what was going on in my head about this district. I speak positively about BISD everywhere I go. We have to continue to tell the BISD story in a positive light. Yeah, we got some jokers we got to deal with. But we need to tell the positive things. And I asked last night about some people, you know, don't take a handful if you can't handle a handful when you come to help the district. Take a teaspoon. If all you can handle is a teaspoon, a teaspoon is our little kinder kids and our elementary kids. Deal with a teaspoon. But if you know somebody that can take on a much larger role, let them help with our middle schools and our high school. Who said a little elementary ain't teaspoon? I heard that. Yeah, I know they kick in the shins there, Mr., but you all right. You can handle it. But I am, I am proud of this district and the direction that we're going. We're going to be successful. And all of Texas is going to know from where we came from to where we are. And I need all of your help. I don't have to hit this too hard. Anybody got anything else?